Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 6th of 2021 at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the back, on the back wall there on the table, and are available during the meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call. Note that everyone is here less, Karen. Lloyd is here from the board. Next item on the agenda is approval of the March 8th, 2021 minutes. Are there any questions, concerns with the minutes? The only thing that I saw in the minutes was that Item 3 had a unanimous vote 6 to 0. Item 4 had a unanimous vote of 5 to 0, and the rest of them were 6 to 0 as well, assuming that that was in the consent agenda. I don't remember someone abstaining. So I guess I would, and it doesn't change the outcome of that item, obviously, but I would like to make a note of that, have Jerry check that when she gets back and correct accordingly. Anything else on the notes?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to Item 2, approval of today's agenda. Within today's agenda, we have the consent agenda that consists of Items 3 through 9, followed by normal agenda items 10 through, let's say, 20, followed by our normal County Board report, items from the public, et cetera. After that, coming to Item 25. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Seeing none?
I'll move approval.
Motion and approval, second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's consent agenda.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Planning, or the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Agenda item number 3 is Conditional Use Permit 9940 for George Chivlis to review manufactured home as a ranch hand residence in the limited agriculture district. Staff is recommending to continue this review until the April 26th Planning Commission meeting. Agenda item number 4 is Conditional Use Permit 06-33 for Christina Troutman to review a customary home occupation, an animal hospital, in a general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 06-33 with conditions. Agenda item number 5 is Conditional Use Permit Review 15-28 for Michael and Erica Radke to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a ranch hand residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of extension of Conditional Use Permit 15-28 with conditions. Agenda item number 6 is Conditional Use Permit Review 16-31 for Black Hills Raptor Center to review a bird education and health facility on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1631 with conditions. Agenda item number 7 is Conditional Use Permit Review 18-10 for Ray and Erin Atkins to review an accessory structure, a garage, prior to a principal structure on the subject property in the limited agriculture district, and staff is recommending to end this Conditional Use Permit as it is no longer needed. Agenda item number 8 is Conditional Use Permit Review 18-42 for Keith and Sandra Lochner to allow for home occupation in a suburban residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 18-42 with conditions. Agenda item number 9 is Conditional Use Permit Review 20-02 for Sunquist LLC, Rob Hammerquist is the agent, to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 20-02 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? I do have speaker request form for Item 5, so I'll be pulling that item from the agenda. For those folks in the audience, Items 3 through 9 are on the consent agenda, which means that we will vote on those with one vote of the board. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to have their item heard separately for separate consideration? Items 3 through 9, anybody? Seeing no requests for a separate consideration, the consent agenda consists of Items 3 through 9, less Item 5. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to Item 5.
Mr. Chairman, just for clerical, Item 10 didn't get marked in the book. It has an agenda item, so just for clerical records, all the pages were left open, so, but it is Number 10.
Thank you. Item number 5, I just have a note here that says that Brian Kleebord is speaking on Erica's behalf. Is Brian in the audience? Oh, well, please come forward. State your name for the record when you get to the podium.
My name is Erica Radke, and I've, initially, when I put in the request form, it was for, I had been contacted by someone from Planning saying that they were going to issue my Conditional Use Permit as null and void due to, I believe, its ordinance section 3 or 304 for a peaked roof on a mobile home, as well as non-reflective metal siding on the mobile home.
Okay.
When I was contacted, it was October 20th, which was six days prior to the meeting. Hearing today that it was going for approval to continue, I actually don't have very many questions on it, other than what conditions I would have to continue, just to make sure that I would not need the peaked roof on a 1970 mobile home that would not be able to withstand the load of a peaked roof.
Jason, can you come forward? I don't see that as a specific requirement, so in the packet that's available online, or staff could give you a copy of it, within there, there are six conditions that are, that were recommended for approval as a basis of the extension of the Conditional Use Permit, and those six conditions are listed within the agenda packet. I don't see anything about a peaked roof necessarily in there. Can you speak to this item, Jason?
Sure. Yeah, and I'll be more than happy to meet with you after the meeting and get you a list of those conditions of approval.
Perfect.
What about our concerns about the peaked roof and null and void and some of these items?
There were some issues being discussed among staff about, you know, the applicability of a peaked roof on an older mobile home, and we've all come to the determination that those criteria that are in the zoning ordinance, once you get a CUP for a single wide mobile home for a caretaker or a ranch hand residence, it applies to all of those criteria. So, once you have a CUP, then you're able to utilize that mobile home for that use. That makes sense.
So essentially, as this is now, it's somewhat grandfathered in? Is that right? Because it was a CUP before? I'm not following you.
So I believe there's four criteria on there that they need to meet for the non, or for the peak, non-reflective roof, the wood-like siding. I think there's a couple more in there, too, that I can't remember right now, but once you get a CUP for the use, then you're able to utilize that mobile home without those.
Okay. So just for my clarification, on the speaker request form, it indicates that you're opposed to this item, but as the staff report is currently written, it is recommended for the approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1528 with these six conditions. Are you in favor? Do you want this to continue?
Yes.
Yes, you want the Conditional Use Permit?
I did not know that it was going for approval.
I'm sorry. Say again?
I did not know that it was going for approval of continuation.
Okay.
So that's why I put opposed.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Go ahead.
You know, I don't have any questions on the item per se, but it just, how do these misunderstandings happen? How did, from the staff perspective, how did Ms. Radke get the impression that this was going to be continued, it wasn't going to be approved? I mean, don't they, doesn't the applicant get the latest information from the staff?
Yeah, I thought that we had a discussion about that moving forward, but maybe not.
Yeah, it just seems to me this is kind of unnecessary issue that, that it didn't, the communication didn't keep up with the actual decisions being made about this by the staff. So I guess I just would encourage you to, you know, work a little harder on that, maybe, or be a little bit more mindful of it, that I think it's the applicant's right to really know what the staff is thinking on these matters. Thank you.
Further comments?
Sure.
And then Lloyd?
I totally agree. I think there was some miscommunication somewhere along the line. If you knew this was approved with the existing conditions, you know, that's a lot of heartache and thinking for the last week, just figuring out what you're going to do with the home if you had to do the peek roof and all that other stuff. So I think we need to, they're going to sit down with you after this today and kind of go over this with you. And I think basically, as you were saying, if this conditional use would have dropped, then those other requirements would have been, should have been required, am I correct?
Correct, yep.
But that's not happening. We're continuing it out. We're approving the conditions with these conditions.
Correct, yep.
But if this ever, if you ever let this go, then those other requirements could step into place.
Correct.
Okay. I think that might have been something that's.
Okay. Further questions, comments on this item?
Rich, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Brittany Moller, Planning Director. Jerry does send out a copy of the staff report and the agenda to all of the agenda applicants, so they should have gotten something in the mail from Jerry.
I haven't recently.
Okay. She typically sends them out the week prior, so, but the agenda item and the staff reports get mailed to the applicants.
This may have been a case where it just didn't get there in time or something, yeah.
Quite possibly.
Yeah. Got it.
Can I make a comment on that? Was that certified mail?
No, we do send it regular, first class.
Anything else? Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 15-28 with six conditions, and the applicant is in favor of that. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for general reference, Brittany, perhaps each planner could have it as a responsibility to follow up and make sure that the applicant's got the conditions to save them from coming to town, so they know what the conditions are. I know it's, it seems like that, seems to be a question that comes up fairly often. They didn't, they don't have a copy of the conditions, and we know that Jerry sends those out, but it might be each planner, it just might be wise to put it on their checklist, just give them a call, see if they got it.
Sure. So all the new applications moving forward, we do request an email address. So some of the new requests, the planners are staying in contact with them via email, and they are mailing copies of the staff report to them via email.
Just mind you, there's geezers like me up in the hills, though, that if we didn't spend a lot of money, we wouldn't have email. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 10.
Morning again, Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Director. Agenda item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit 21-05 to amend an existing Conditional Use Permit to allow an existing caretaker's residence to remain on the subject property for care of another family member. The applicant, the landowner, is Pamela Restorer. Site location is 22939 Hidden Springs Road. It's out off Radar Hill Road. It is 9.6 acres, currently zoned, limited agriculture district. When staff went through and applied the criteria, the only two that we found, the only two existing conditions that weren't being met were basically for the name of Ms. Loretta Parker, who care is no longer needed for. So this is more or less just to update that name with another family member who requires care on that property.
Okay. Questions for staff?
With that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Item Number 10, which is Conditional Use Permit 21-05.
I have it as CU.
We're on Number 11.
Yeah, CU 21-05.
We're on Number 11.
Oh, we're on 11?
No, we're on 10.
10.
And it's CU 8525. Am I incorrect?
Yep, I apologize. My mistake.
Okay.
Yep.
What is it?
8525.
8525?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I'll restate my motion. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Conditional Use Permit 85-25 per staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? To confirm, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 11.
Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item 11 is Conditional Use Permit CU 21-09. It is to allow a home occupation on the subject property, a home-based firearm sales, gunsmithing, firearm manufacturing, in a low-density residential district. The applicant and landowner is Michael Fessler. The size of the property is 5.0 acres. Existing land use is residential, current zoning is low-density residential, which requires a three-acre lot size. Staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit CU 21-09 with 12 conditions. When approving CUPs, we look at seven criteria. Number one, yes, the home occupation takes place entirely within a home and should not be detrimental or endanger the public, health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the Conditional Use Permit should not change the residential use of the property, and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on land use enjoyment properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Number four, the subject property is served by a private onsite wastewater treatment system and water well. Access to the property is provided off an approach off Lightning Ridge Road. Number five, access to the property will be provided via an approach off of Lightning Ridge Road. Number six, yes, the current zoning is low-density residential. Home occupations are allowed in this district with a Conditional Use Permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use of the property is rural residential, which allows for a single-family residence as a primary use. Home occupations are secondary use allowed through a Conditional Use Permit. There is a single-family residence currently on the property. Access is off Lightning Ridge Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. This was routed around for comment. No major concerns were raised. On February 16th, the applicant applied for the Conditional Use Permit to allow the firearm home occupation. There will be some manufacturing onsite and some sales. There will be limited in-person sales on the property. The items will be stored in a safe. The applicant needs a Conditional Use Permit to obtain a federal firearm license, and staff has received no comments or concerns about this request. So again, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit CU 21-09 with 12 conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Chairman.
Cody, I just, when I was reading it, and it's tiny, but it's a small conflict, if you look at Number 4, it says that no on-premises retail sales be allowed as Number 4 condition. And then we had in our analysis, limited in-person sales will take place on the property.
He's not opening a storefront?
Yeah, that's more for a storefront, that Number 4 condition, that you'd actually have a storefront sign, parking, everything to be a retail store.
It's just the way I read it, but I understand your question.
I'm saying when it's a home occupation, we're either going to have on-premises retail sales, or we're not going to have it.
We can take that condition out.
Okay. That's what I'm suggesting. That's a conflict from even when we approve it.
Yeah.
It is what I'm coming off with. I realize, but we are approving an occupation, a home occupation here, so, Conditional Use Permit type. That was my take on it, was one note is in conflict with the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff on this item? Okay. I don't have any speaker request forms on this item. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 21-09 with, we had 12 conditions.
11, no.
11. If Number 4 is stricken.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good morning, Commissioners, Shuti Ma Saboon, Planning Department. This item is for Conditional Use Permit Request, CU 2110, to allow a tread as a primary use in general agriculture district. The applicant is Harley Eisenbys and Christine Brosst. Criteria for the consideration of approving Conditional Use Permit. Criteria Number 1 is, yes, the proposed tread should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria Number 2, yes, the proposed tread should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria Number 3, yes, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property in the area. Criteria Number 4, yes, the subject property is currently vacant. Access will be off of the Forest Service Road Eastment. An address will need to be assigned and posted in accordance with Pennington County Ordinance 20 if this Conditional Use Permit is approved. Conditional, I'm sorry, criteria Number 5, yes, the surrounding, the surrounding nearby properties are forest service land and vacant lots. Therefore, it should not affect traffic congestion. Criteria Number 6, yes, the current zoning district is general agriculture, and accessory structure as a primary use is allowed in the district with a Conditional Use Permit. Criteria Number 7, yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district, and accessory structure as a primary use is allowed in this district with a Conditional Use Permit. Therefore, this Conditional Use Permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property is vacant of any structure, and access will be off of the Forest Service Road Eastment. There is no flood hazard in the air, there is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. The request was routed to multiple departments. There is no concern, there is no significant concerns or objection to this Conditional Use Permit. Staff was unable to perform the site visit due to the weather and the location of the subject property. Staff find no significant issue with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Staff recommend approval of Conditional Use Permit 2110 with nine conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Chairman.
Got two for you. One of the things was, and this is just something that used to be done in the past, and I've mentioned it to Brittany this morning, when we see that it is an out-of-town address, some of the folks do buy property and build a building so they can come out here with their RV, store their little things and sheds and want, we used to put cold-type storage as the condition, because that way there was no utilities. Because once you start utilities, we don't go around and check or have a police-type of situation that can check whether people are using, and there was a number of them being just used in the summer for friends and people that come along, and that was what the building was really for. And then, secondly, I think you've got one, you've got a kind of a questionable situation in the access, in that it doesn't appear that the Gomez's had it transferred to them per what's written in there. And sometimes, when you break one of those contracts where the next folks, in other words, the Black Hills Forest can start over again. And it does say in there, upon conveyance of private, private use, it will need to be transferred to the new landowner of record. Well, if Gomez's had it and they didn't do it because it still lists as Pope and Talbot, you may have a little bit of a hang-up there. I don't know. Just my thought.
So staff spoke with the applicant Harley Eisenbys on March 17. Oh, and by the way, under Analysis C, it's March 17. It's supposed to be March 17, 2021, but on the staff report, it said 2017. So I need to correct that, too. When we spoke, Mr. Eisenbys stated that there will be no utilities for this tread, and it will be only for personal use. He will, he want to store the foiler and some firewood or the equipment, like chain, chainsaw and those stuff. And by the way, the applicant, Christine Brosst is on Zoom, too, if you have any question for them.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the question that you have, Commissioner Johnson, about the Eastment, staff spoke with the applicant, and he stated that he is in the process of transferring the road eastman from the previous owner to the current, to them. And I contacted Jacob Eckard, the Forest Service, and he confirmed that he was contacted by the applicant, and they are working on, you know, to get an approval.
The only reason I brought it up was there's a difference between where they're saying they automatically will transfer it versus if the government decides, or that particular department decides to start over, it can, I've seen it take three years to get one in writing, where it's literally in your hands. So that was the only reason I brought it up, and that's going to be a real, what would you say, you know, ask or assign your records, you're going to be checking all the time to see whether you have the written copy.
Yes. And then, so staff will recommend to, for this Conditional Use Permit to be reviewed in one year, and then that will be the, that staff can verify with Mr. Eckard from Forest Service, too, how the product. how the progress, no, the progress of the road easement transfer.
Thank you, the only thing I would say then is I still would put no utilities because we go personal use and bringing a bunch of your friends in RVs is a personal use. That's why we used to add that, no utilities, because pretty soon they started adding heat, they bring some water over, that sort of thing, thank you.
Go ahead Kathy.
I just have two things, one is that my understanding in reading through this is that the intention is to have living quarters in this shed until they are able to construct their home. Is, I mean, isn't that what, is that still the plan? It says.
That is not the plan. When the Allen, Dwayne Allen, the court enforcement spoke, he was the first contact with the applicant. But when staff, when I spoke with Mr. Eisenbys and he said right now it's just gonna be a storage and he is aware that if it's gonna, they're gonna add living quarters in there, they will have to come to the department and then we can discuss for a building permit and if it become a living quarter, this conditional use permit can be ended.
I see, okay. Second question, is, when they come for a building permit, just for the shed as it's envisioned right now, does, is the easement, do you require proof of that easement being established?
Yes.
So that, the fact is that until that easement is officially transferred from the Forest Service, no building permit will be issued, is that correct?
The access, the legal access need to be provided, so I can verify, I can, if I can get, no, I'm sorry, not me, the applicant can get a letter from the Forest Service that they are in the process and I think that would be, that would be sufficient to apply for a building permit. Yep, because they actually be proactive, that they already like move forward and contact the Forest Service prior to this conditional use permit request.
So it must be implicit, once the process of transferring that access easement is underway with the Forest Service, that the new owners are allowed to use the easement in the meantime?
I believe so. But I can verify with Mr. Eckard from the Forest Service too.
Yeah.
If you would like me.
Well, no, it's okay, I just wanted to be clear, is it how the progression of that relates to the building permit? But I think what I heard you say is that if the bill, if that transfer of the access easement is underway, then the building permit can be issued, which suggests to me then that the Forest Service must allow transport, you know, use of that during that process.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I didn't mean to throw that in, but Brittany, if you'd comment, you, the director used to have some latitude about the hard copies so that the folks could get when it was a minor building permit. Do you still exercise that?
Our office does, we've had a similar situation, that there was a CUP in front of you from Mr. Dan Johnson, that he had a similar issue with the Forest Service. They did issue a statement or a letter that said that we have every intention of issuing this, it's just that it has to go through the process. So this would probably be a similar situation, that we would get confirmation from the Forest Service that they will issue it, it just has to go through the process.
And that's why I brought it up, I think in this case, I could see the Forest Service going through the whole process again because there was a gap on property ownership, it breaks their contract. So, and they're very pointy fact about things like that. And in that case, I could see these poor folks waiting a hard, a long time before they're gonna have a hard copy in their hand.
Yeah, in the past, they have stated that they would allow access to continue. Most of those special use permits sometimes can take up to eighteen months, so.
Thank you.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Staff's recommendation is for approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash ten with, and there were nine conditions, but you discussed some minor changes. Charlie, do you have a specific recommendation on that?
Not really, other than we, like I said, we used to put, and he agreed to the same thing, no utilities. We used to put cold storage, something like that, so that you didn't start dressing it up.
So do you want to add the word cold storage in item three? In recommendation?
Let's do that.
That the proposed shed be used for personal use only, cold storage, no commercial type use is allowed.
Thank you.
Okay, noting the change in item three and the nine conditions, is there a motion? Motion for approval, is there a second?
Still moved.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is a conditional use permit request to allow a twelve feet by sixty feet single-wide mobile home on the subject property. The applicant is Travis Christman, he is in the audience today if you have any question. Condition, the criteria for the approve, approving conditional use permit, criteria number one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria number two, yes, the request of use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the property, of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria number three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or the improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria number four, access will be off of Reno Gouge Road via the existing approach. Utilities will be provided via a private well and a separate on-site wastewater treatment system. An address will need, will need to be assigned and posted in accordance with Pennington County Ordinance number twenty, if this conditional use permit is approved. Criteria number five, the requested use should not affect traffic congestion because the subject property is surrounded by the Forest Service land. Criteria number six, the current zoning is a general agriculture district. A ranch home residence is an allow use on the zoning district if the property is taxed by the Pennington County Department of Equalization as agriculture. And this property is also taxed agriculture. However, the proposed single-wide mobile home does not meet the requirements of the section three oh four B one C. Therefore, it is required and approved conditional use permit to place it on the subject property. Criteria number seven, the future land use of the subject property is rural land district. Allowing this conditional use permit should not be, should not, I'm sorry, should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The subject property has multiple structures and they have, they all have a building permit. And that is an existing on-site wastewater treatment system. Access is off of the Reno Gouge Road and that is no flood, no spatial flood hazard on the, on the subject property. This request was routed to multiple departments. There is no significant concerns or objection to the conditional use permit request. The applicant Travis Christman applied for a conditional use permit to allow twelve foot, twelve feet by sixty feet, single-wide mobile home on the subject property. The propose, this single-wide mobile home will be for the ranch home residence. And this proposed mobile home does not meet the size requirement of three oh four B one C. Therefore, the conditional use permit must be obtained to place the proposed mobile home. On March tenth, twenty twenty-one, staff performed a site visit and spoke with the applicant. Staff find no significant, staff finds no significant issue with the applicant's request. It is appear, it appears to be in harmony with existing lots as and current land use in the area. Originally, staff recommend approval, conditional use permit, CU twenty-one eleven with nine condition. However, with the staff discussion regarding to the zoning ordinance three oh four B one C, about the conditions of the single-wide mobile homes, staff would like to remove condition number six stating that proposing wide mobile home has peaked non-reflective type roof wood or simulated wood type siding and skirting. So, therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one eleven with eight conditions.
Thank you, are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Charlie.
On your routing, the county planning, and I'm not sure who I'm gonna ask this question to. It says operating permit CO or zero zero P nineteen one 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 eight with status list is extended, my immediate question was, I don't know what that means. And then number two, the paragraph right below it is really a humdinger to me. It says there's one bedroom and that the disposal, no disposal, and septic tank capacity is three hundred gallons. Poly tank, which is no problem, black water, okay, is a holding tank located under the outhouse, comma. Then we go into gray water goes to a five hundred gallon tank and drain field that is unknown. And we don't have any problems with that?
One second.
Sure. You, go ahead and catch up, I'm just saying that, the poly tank, and it just says it goes to a holding tank located under the outhouse. That doesn't seem to meet any of our guidelines for a normal septic system.
I'll answer the question.
Sure, go ahead. Well, I knew you could tell me what extended meant right off the bat, and I need help right there.
Sure, so the three hundred gallon poly tank that's under the outhouse, those take a very long time to actually need to be pumped. My guess is the reason it is extended is because there's not enough material in the tank to actually pump.
So do you leave it to them to pump it, then, Brittany, you leave it to them to pump it?
We, what we do is we extend it for three years and we check back in to see where they are with that.
The word extended, thank you.
Yes, so when we put it in there, so that's what that extension is, when we do that. As far as the five hundred gallon concrete tank and drain field is unknown, in order for him to get the building permit, he would have to verify that that septic is sized appropriately for the single-wide mobile home that he's going to be placing on that property. At that time, if it doesn't meet with the requirements, he would be required to upgrade his septic system to meet those requirements for the single-wide mobile home. In order to get the building permit.
That's excellent, I, because I don't have any problems with a green field that's gray water. And I am sure the whole board understands the difference between gray water and the black water. And the gray water, I have no hang up on that, and your extended makes sense, thank you.
And I would like to let you know that the applicant plans to get a separate the septic system for the single-wide mobile home.
Okay. Further questions, comments? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one dash eleven with eight conditions, noting that number six is stricken.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is minor plan unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash zero five to amend an existing plan unit development to leave in an RV, while building a single family residence on the subject property. The applicants are Philip or Mary Sweeney. The criteria for the minor plan unit, plan unit development amendment review. Criteria one is, is there, there is a change in use of the subject property in this plan unit development, which is leaving in the RV while building a single family residence. There is, there are, there are existing family residence construction on the lot containing three acres or more. Does the subject property lots will meet the minimum of a hundred feet and all set back be twenty-five feet from all property lines, yes. And the access will, will, and access to the subject property will be taken from either George Place or Morgan Road. So it depends on when the applicant apply for a building permit, that's when the site plan will show the driveway. Is there, is there legal access to the property? That will be yes, and then the access, the approach, the approach permit will be signed off by the road district. And because there is no structure on the property, the building permit is not required at this time. And there is no spatial flood hazard on the subject property. This request was routed to multiple departments and that is, and there are no significant concerns or objection to this plan unit development amendment request. And staff would like to correct that too, that because staff put it as a conditional use permit request. It should be corrected to a minor plan unit development amendment. On March ninth, twenty twenty-one, staff received a support break letter from the applicant's neighbor and staff, the next day, staff performed a site visit to verify that the subject property is vacant of any structure. Staff find no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appear to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Staff recommends approval, minor plan unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash zero five with second conditions.
Thank you, are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Charlie.
I don't mean to be picking on you, Chairman. I think we should add some additional words to condition number two. And the only reason being, when we approve these trailers, RVs, whatever, they should be tied to the building permit date somehow. In other words, that the use of them ties to the building permit. When the building permit is supposed to be done, if it's two years, if they're not done building their home, they have to come get an extension that would extend condition number two so they could continue using the RV vehicle as living quarters. number two, so they could continue using the, the, uh, the, uh, RV vehicle as living quarters. And, and we used to do that, I, I don't see it there now. So, what I'm suggesting, even though you're reviewing it in one year, what if it takes them six months or eight months to get their plans put together, so they still don't have a building permit? If, if you tie it to the building permit, then the RV has to go when the building permit is done. That's, that, and I would believe we should put not to exceed building permit ending date or extensions of the building permit.
Say that again?
Not to exceed building permit, ending date, or extensions of building permit. So, those folks know they can use it to the end, but we also know that it, there's a time there, so do the neighbors, when that has to go.
If you would like to add that.
I think we should tie them to that, so that people, we used to put a hundred and eighty days, but then you were always extending it. I think it's better to tie it to the building permit. If the building permit's still in effect, those folks have the right to use their RV until they can get into their house. Just giving it out for thought.
Yeah. Further questions, clarifications? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, go ahead, Kathy.
I just would like to ask Brittany about that. Brittany, do you see any, uh, issues or conflicts with the additional language here tying the duration of this conditional use permit to a building permit?
No, I do not believe so. Uh, then that way, if the building permit, if they need to extend it, if their construction isn't, or they'll have to renew their building permit, um, and then when we do our reviews for these, um, we can bring that back up or do that as part of the review.
Okay, thank you.
How long is a building permit valid?
Two years. And it can be extended once for another year.
Got it.
Three years maximum.
Questions?
Uh, my name's Phil Sweeney, I'm the property owner.
Go ahead.
Um, I've already got, I've already got plans drawn, and will start construction, uh, I, I hope to have, uh, concrete work all done in May. Um, I should have the, the entire building finished, um, easily by this time next year. So, uh, your provision, uh, requ- uh, your, your language, uh, tying a time limit, I have absolutely no problem with that. Uh, I, I absolutely will not exceed the, the building permit, uh, timeline.
Uh, thank you, sir. Do you have any further questions on the recommendations from staff?
I do not.
Are there any questions for the property owner, the applicant? Seeing none, hearing none, staff recommends, uh, approval of PU twenty-one dash zero five with, uh, seven conditions noting the not to exceed the building permit, uh, requirement, and item two is their motion.
So, move.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fifteen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Cody's Ag Planning Department. Item fifteen is vacation plat VP twenty-one dash zero two. Has to vacate notes on a plat for lot four, block one, and Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant and landowner are Alan and Tamara Schmidt, they are in the audience if you have any questions. The property is zone planning at development at three point oh three acres, it is currently vacant of any structures. Staff recommends denial of vacation plat VP twenty-one dash zero two. However, if the planning commission approves vacation plat VP twenty-one dash zero two, staff would recommend, those two conditions is actually one, and that is that only notes thirteen and fourteen be ca- vacated from the Mountain Meadows plat for lot four, block one of Mountain Meadows subdivision. When vacating a plat, we look at certain criteria. Is the property zoned appropriately? Yes, it's planning development. Are subdivision regulation variances required? Yes. Have all required subdivision regulations been, variance has been obtained? No, they attained one for the water storage, but not for the fire mitigation that requires the, uh, fire sprinklers. Does the property require percolation tests and soil, soil profile information? Yes. Is the property in an area with poor soils and risks, risk for water contamination? Yes. Is there possibility of high fire danger in the area? Yes. Could vacating the notes on the plat impact neighboring properties? Yes. And does the entire subdivision have access to the water from Rushmore Ranch Estates? Uh, no. Currently, the property is vacant of any structures. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Adjustment approved, uh, subdivision regulation variance twenty-one dash, um, zero one to waive the water storage requirement. Uh, however, subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero two to re- re- waive the fire mitigation, the residential, uh, sprinkler systems in the house was denied. A little subdivision history, on June sixth, two thousand and eight, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty dash zero eight with fifteen conditions. Uh, condition five stated that applying, that prior to applying for the preliminary plat, the applicant provide engineered plans to meet fire flows of not less than a thousand gallons per minute for two hours, or offer alternatives to be reviewed, uh, and approved by the county fire coordinator. On December second, two thousand and eight, the Board of Commissioners approved preliminary plat twenty dash zero eight with sixteen conditions. Condition thirteen stated that fire flow of five hundred gallons per minute be provided for all homes are equipped with a residential fire sprinkler system per NFPA standards. If all homes are not equipped with such systems, then a thousand gallons per minute must be provided. Condition number three states that prior to the final plat supplemental, that a note be placed on the plat to read prior to obtaining building permit for residents of any of the properties. Two suitable onsite wastewater treatment system areas must be identified with comp- with accompanying percolation tests and soil profiles certified by a registered professional engineer or licensed plumber. And so, pr- soil profiles must show that proper soil separation can be obtained as outlined in State Administration Rule seventy-four fifty-three oh one fifteen. Condition four states that prior to the final plat supplemental, a note be put on the plat that read due to the fact that the property lies above the Madison Aquifer, that there is a possibility of, possibility of poor soil conditions and negative environmental impacts, and that advanced pre- pre-treatments type septic systems, such as AquaSafe or Ventex, be signed with signed service agreements be required for every lot. And condition number five states that prior to the final plat supplemental, a note be put on the plat that read, that reads, onsite wastewater systems to be located on any of the properties must be to design by cer- must be designed and certified by a registered professional engineer or licensed plumber. Any alternative systems need approval from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. As a last resort, Pennington County may approve the use of holding tanks. Access to the property is off Abigail Drive, there is no special flood hazard area that exists on the property. This was routed around for comment, county highway came back and said since it's in Rushmore Ranch, Road District number one, they don't have any comment. And number two was from the county environmental planner for septic. He states that major environmental concerns exist with this proposal. The Madison Aquifer is the main source of groundwater in the Black Hills area. The rap- the city of Rapid City attains more than one-half of its municipal water supply from, from the, this bedrock aquifer via deep wells and spring. Numerous additional users in the Black Hills have attained water from the Madison Aquifer first for domestic, industrial, and irrigation uses. Groundwater flow within the Madison Aquifer is complex due to the arrangement of secondary porosity characterized by fractures and the ability to intercept others forming fracture sets. Due to the above mentioned facts, I would not recommend favorably to approve the proposal to vacate plat notes concerning the use of advanced treatment units as part of the onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, the applicants are requesting to vacate notes seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen for lot four, block one, of Mountain Meadows Estates. Note seven, eight, and nine state that prior to the issuance of a building permit, two suitable onsite wastewater treatment areas be identified and accompanied with per- percolation sofa- soil profile holes certified by a registered professional engineer or licensed plumber, and advanced treatment units be required and installed in all lots. Due to concerns about soil types with, and within the subdivision and being over the Madison Aquifer recharge zone, staff would oppose vacating these notes. Note twelve states that all homes are required to install fired sprinkler system. At the March sixteenth, twenty, from Board of Adjustment, meaning that the applicant's variance to waive the fire mitigation plans was denied, therefore, uh, this note cannot be vacated. And notes thirteen and fourteen state that after sixty-five building permits have been issued, surety for the increased in storage must be guaranteed, and prior to the eightieth building permit, water storage should be increased to ninety-five thousand gallons for Rushmore Ranch and Mountain Meadows subdivision. At the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Adjustment meeting, the applicant obtained approval for the variance to not increase water storage for domestic use and fire protection. While the applicants have attained the variance to waive these requirements, that staff opposes vacating notes on the plat, as there are four lots within the Mountain Meadows subdivision who cannot be guaranteed water access from Rushmore Ranch Estates. So, staff is recommending denial of vacation plat VP twenty-one dash zero two.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
I've got a question for one of our members that maybe can help me, Lloyd. There was, uh, these conditions are on other, uh, plats already on file, the same conditions. Wasn't there recently, within the last few years, where you guys actually, um, enforced, in other words, on the contract, or left the people out there after they installed their sprinkler system and whatnot, um, to make sure that he had his well up to date, uh, up to the flows and that sort of thing? Isn't that been like three, four years ago, there was a?
I don't recall.
Okay. Just, I remembered one. But this isn't the only set of conditions like this, in other words, that are in place right now. Do you remember, Brittany?
There's one other subdivision, I think that you're referring to Canyon Springs. They did not have the fire flows, so they did have to put residential sprinklers, um, in the bill, or in the, single family residences that are on the top of the hill.
And the commissioners stayed behind that, didn't they? In other words, stayed?
Yes, that is still a requirement for that subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
I can say, I can give you a little background from the commission meeting last week on, on this particularly, what, you know, we, uh, from the notes that there were on there, decided that making them build a, a storage tank wasn't applicable at that point in time, but they denied this, the sprinklers, or waiving the sprinkler system, so he's, they're requiring the sprinkler system be put into the house.
Thank you very much, Lloyd.
And it, it was a tough, tough meeting.
Lot of conversation.
Tough meeting, yeah.
Can you say all that, can you say all that again? I was trying to understand, um, specifically, uh, what was the justification for the variance to waive the requirements? It says that the applicants obtained approval of a variance to not increase water storage for domestic use and fire protection. What, what do they currently have now?
So, they could, they currently use, um, Rushmore Ranch and Southern Hills Water. Um, Mountain Meadows was supposed to be a subdiv- like a huge subdivision, fifty lots, and after certain phases, it was supposed to increase, um, the water storage, and then they were gonna tie in with Rushmore Ranch, that never happened. So, Rushmore Ranch has guaranteed seven lots water. Um, the Schmidt's lot is one of those lots. There will be four that don't, ha- and Southern Hills Water can't guarantee water hookups for them.
Why? Why can't Southern Hills guarantee water hookups for those?
Uh, Don from Southern Hills didn't say. When I, when I asked him about it, he's, when I asked if those four lots came in in the future and requested water hookups to those lots, um, he said that he'd have to go in front of the board, but there, um, he didn't see, foresee it happening, that those lots could hook into Rushmore Ranch.
Okay. Um, and what was discussed in the meeting last week?
Uh, thirty thousand gallon storage unit, what, correct? Did that?
It, it was thirty thousand, um, however, when I was working on this staff report, the condition states ninety-five thousand gallons, and they have seventy-five thousand, so it, um, be twenty thousand instead of thirty thousand.
Be additional twenty. So, without waiving the variance, they can do a permit, building permit. And so, that was a, a big discussion, in fact, we went back and forth on it. And so, the, the, uh, Board of Adjustments decided to waive their requirements, because they didn't feel was adequate for one resident to have to, to do, come up with that funding for that. But they did require, and they felt that there was adequate water supply for the residents, but, uh, not enough for the, to waive the requirements for a sprinkler system, so they, uh, denied the request to waive sprinkler system. So, they're required to put a sprinkler system in.
Okay, Kathy.
The applicant was okay with it at that point in time.
I'm, I'm just a little confused on how this works, because this, these condi- these notes apply to the larger plat of, of lots one through four, and, I mean, it goes on and on, all the lots. So, now, so the idea is to replat lot four, is that the idea? And then just the plat for that, that applies to this lot four, won't have notes, but the notes will remain on this larger plat? I just don't quite.
So, every, everybody who wants to build on the, on the lots that are there will have to come in and get the same vacating in notes, the same subdivision regulation variances.
Okay, so, so then, in other words, what we're asked to do today is just re- move the notes, so that the notes will remain on this larger plat, like we're showing here. But somehow or another, they will not apply to lot four.
Correct.
So, so then the notes, like, for example, thirteen and fourteen, that really refer to the larger area, in other words, after sixty-five building permits, and that have really don't apply to lot four. Why, why, I mean, why have lot thirteen and fourteen, which apply to this larger area, on just, uh, on the notes for a single plat, or a single lot, excuse me? How, I don't understa- I'm confused on how all that works.
Sorry, Kathy, I can try to answer that. Um, if they wanted to vacate all this notes on the plat, every individual property owner that owns a lot as part of this plat would have to sign the application. Um, since the Schmitz are only responsible for their lot, lot four, um, they had submitted this request on their behalf for their own lot. Uh, if we wanted the whole subdivision, like I said, the, uh, previous developer, uh, is no longer around, those lots have all been transferred, sold, I think some of them recently, within the last year. So, all of the individuals would have had to come in, all of the signatories for each of those lots would have had to come in to vacate all of these notes on the plat. Um, all of these notes on the plat were subdivision regulations at the time, um, that this plat was plotted.
I see.
So, that's why the subdivision regulation variance was required, because these were subdivision regulations.
But, I mean, how does it work in practice? I mean, is this, the plat that, you know, is in the file upstairs, you know, this plat, is there gonna be like a little note added that these don't apply to lot four?
Correct. So, when you go over to the register of deeds, um, they, you'll see like on lot four, there will be a note vacate, and then it'll be a document, whatever the document is, for the resolution, or for the recording for this vacation.
I see.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Kinda add in to help Catherine what she's talking about. And without any additional information on what flow situation sits their availability of water, it, it would appear, uh, to maintain the fact that they're going to have fire extinguishers in their house, they may have to jump through a few hoops and engineering-wise to get that done, depending on what the flows, pressures, that sort of thing, what distance they're going to be from storage. There's a lot of factors in there to make sure that the company that installs those fire extinguishers has the adequate coverage and water supply, uh, for that extinguishing system, if we're, and, and we did hold them to still put those in. Um, this is, this is complicated, uh, for the individual that, that made this application, even to remove those, it's very difficult for them, and may be expensive, uh, just, just to get it done. So, I, I wanted to add in what Catherine was saying, so it's not just a, kind of a slam dunk that that's the rule, well, they may have to go back to the drawing board and jump through some hoops.
I'm gonna try to put this together in my head. Um, back in the day, there was a plat that had some requirements. The developer that developed this back in the day is no longer around. There is no mechanism right now to, uh, increase the storage from, it's currently seventy thousand?
Seventy-five.
From seventy-five thousand to ninety thousand.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five thousand. Seventy-five to ninety-five. Um, there must then be sixty-five building permits pulled already, is that right? That was the, that was the number?
Correct, yes.
And so, these folks bought this lot, they're number sixty-six.
Correct.
Okay. And now, the question is, is whether or not
Yeah.
they're, they're required to, uh, bring the subdivision up to what the notes said in the original plat.
They're, they're required to meet it, they're not necessarily themselves required just them to increase the storage, they could work with the other lots in the neighborhood increasing the storage.
Okay. There's no reason why those other folks would throw a bunch of money in the kitty though to There's no reason why those other folks would throw a bunch of money in the kitty though, to, to do all of that. So here's my next question. Discuss the water system for th- this subdivision, i- is all of it provided by Southern Hills Water?
Only seven of the eleven lots that require water are, have hookups to Rushmore Ranch water. There's four that do not.
Excuse me. My name's Chad Wilmus, I'm the general contractor.
Sure. Yeah, maybe you can.
I might be able to give you a little history that could help.
Your name again, sir, for the record?
Chad Wilmus.
Chad Wilmus, okay. Go ahead.
So the, what we found out is the, the property owners, when they bought the property, were not aware of, of these notes on the plat, it wasn't shared with them when they bought the property. And all the other people we've talked to that have bought properties in that subdivision weren't aware of these special conditions. So once we found out, and we went to get a building permit and found out about this condition and that they were sixty-six or sixty-seven, and the requirements for the sprinkler system, the requirements for the additional storage, the requirements for the AquaSafe septic system. Uh, once we started researching that, there's a couple of things that we found out. Talking to Don with Southern Hills Water is while the county says there's only seven lots that they can provide water for, and Don says that's kind of true, but this is all part of also Rushmore Ranchettes. There's six or seven people in Rushmore Ranchettes that have their own wells and do not hook into the Southern Hills Water. Um, so he says technically there's those taps available as well, and that's up to Southern Hills Water to a certain extent. They look at it as how many taps they have available. The county must look at it a little bit differently. But for those four lots that, that the county says there isn't water, technically, Southern Hills says there is taps available if they want to. The fire system, what's weird about the subdivision, if you drive through there, there's fire hydrants all through there. There's water system, there's, so three hundred feet from where they want to put their house, there's a fire hydrant. That fire hydrant is capable of producing six hundred and fifty gallons per minute of water, which according to what we've learned, that's capable of putting out a three thousand square foot structure. What they're proposing to build is less than fourteen hundred square feet. So there is water out there, it's just the, what the county's requiring is a thousand gallons per minute at this point. And if anything less than, than that, that's where they want the sprinkler system. There's, out of Rushmore Ranchettes, so there's fifty-seven other homes out there that do not have sprinkler systems, have the same water system. This is only affecting the Mountain Meadows part, which, like the county said, at one time was gonna be a big development, that went bankrupt. Now there's roughly seven lots, instead of this fifty-some, where, which when these requirements were first started. So out of these seven lots that are left, or that have the water, they do have fire hydrants, they do have, I mean, uh, you know, they can hook up to those fire hydrants and they can get six hundred and fifty gallons per minute out of them to put out a fire. Um, also, the county's requirements also state that that's gotta be at half capacity of storage. So they gotta have a thousand gallons per minute and not go below half capacity, or the storage numbers are all about half capacity. So again, there is plenty of water out there for that situation. It's just not up to the county's requirements of the full thousand gallons. So the sprinkler system would add about seven thousand dollars to the cost to build the home, to put the sprinkler system in it, which getting to a homeowner that's looking at a fire hydrant right across the road from their house just seems a little ridiculous. And then that's only protecting, uh, you know, that doesn't protect it from a wildfire coming through. That's the sprinkler system, what that's supposed to do is if their house starts on fire on the inside, put the fire out so it won't spread. There's still gonna be fifty-seven other neighbors in the neighborhood that don't have that system. So I don't know what the odds are of, of these seven houses, if they're ever built, being the ones that start on fire. Then the other issue with this is then this AquaSafe septic system. What the AquaSafe septic system does is it just cleans the water. So your, your septic tank drains into this AquaSafe system, which adds oxygen to it, and then that goes to the drain field. So it just cleans it a little bit more. It's not a system that's approved by the state, it's not a system that's designed, if you have a bad perk test, that you can then meet the requirement. Uh, it's just an added step, basically. We did have a perk test done on this lot, it perked great, there was no issues with the perk test, the soil is, is fine for that area. That AquaSafe septic system adds, again, about another seven thousand dollars to the cost of the septic system. There's one local contractor we have found that handles this system, he says he does very few of them. That they're not approved by the state, that their main thing would be more if somebody wanted to do holding tanks and try to drain the water out without using a drain field, that in some states they'll allow it using this system. But it's basically redundant to add it to a perfectly good drain field. So again, out of this development, there's fifty-seven other homes that have a standard drain field and septic system. This plat's asking these homeowners to spend an additional seven thousand dollars on this AquaSafe design, when there's no, no real reason. All the other lots in the area, if they meet, and again, even if this lot did not meet the perk test results, the county or the state wouldn't say, here, use the AquaSafe system and we'll allow it, it's not an approved system. Um, so it's just, as far as we can see, it's just an added burden on cost. So if we have to do the sprinkler system, that's seven thousand dollars. If you gotta do this AquaSafe design, which sounds like it's gonna be hard to, to get done and time consuming, that's another seven thousand dollars. And it's just, it's, you know, at some point, doesn't make a lot of sense for these lot owners to have to spend all this extra money for their few lots, and everybody around them doesn't have anything like this.
Is the six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, uh, out of the hydrant coming out of the seventy thousand gallons, or is it from Southern Hills?
Well, it'd be coming out of the seventy thousand.
Seventy-five thousand gallon tank. Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you for the clarifications. The specifics of the notes, however, though, on the plat indicate the location is essentially immediately within the Madison Aquifer limestone. And so the, the intent of the note is that the water would be protected in the aquifer from the septic systems. And you're saying that none of the septic systems up there, uh, follow what was on the plat?
Well, again, this is a new, this plat only affects these seven to ten lots. Rushmore Ranchettes, fifty-seven lots is not part of this. So, so again, in this septic design, this AquaSafe, uh, is not something, in my understanding, that's used, you know, commonly anywhere in, in our area.
Okay.
The entire Canyon Springs subdivision has ATU units, AquaSafes, and there are several other subdivisions that have it. And, uh, the state actually does approve ATU units, so that is, those units are approved by the, by state DNR.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Could you, uh, could you just say that again about the number that are using this system in there? Just, could you just speak a little more slowly, so I make sure I touch it?
Canyon Springs subdivision off, out off of Nemo, that whole subdivision is required to use ATU units.
I see. And so that's been going on for a while and they're functional and?
Correct, yes.
Okay, alright.
There, there's, yeah, there's nothing against using them, other than, again, it's an additional seven thousand dollars to do this. And it's my understanding that if you have a pass, passing perk test, that a standard drain field with the proper soils and perk test does the same thing. You know, they're not allowing people to put septic drain fields in that, uh, that would contaminate the water knowingly, I don't think. That's the whole point of a, having a perk test done, is to determine that it will.
Well, you understand that the, the Madison Aquifer presents itself in the topography in the Black Hills and certain locations. Right? And so if I understand this right, this is located within that outcrafting.
Well, how, how deep would you go to get there, a thousand feet?
It, it, it varies. So talking with Aaron, our subject person who has a degree in geology, said that you can have, the Madison, you can have it be twenty feet below the surface in areas, and you can have it be a thousand feet areas and surfaces. You can have cracks that come in the surface, that'll take water all the way down, or the septic all the way down into the aquifer. As, as for percolation tests, percolation tests show how fast water will move through, through the dirt. It doesn't have anything to do with how much it can contaminate or not contaminate the ground around it. Um, you could, you could do the perk test in the profile hole and dig eight feet, and you could hit bedrocks that have cracks and fissures in it, that'll take that water all the way down to the aquifer.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one question for you, Cody. Somebody, you said the seventy-five thousand gallon tank or whatever is supplying the, the fire, uh, hydrants. Somebody has to put the water in the seventy-five thousand gallon tank.
So, so that's Southern Hills, and Southern Hills did say that they had enough water and water for fire flow, um, if sprinklers were put.
To those that are already installed.
Correct. Anything after that, he said that he could not guarantee that those other four lots would, would have it. However, the, the, the Schmitz did get the variances for, for those, so those, so really thirteen and fourteen, ju- need, need to be vacated to match the, the variance that they got, they did get approval for the variance.
Okay. And my other comments for the contractor, at one time, this was reviewed based upon, there's places not, that shouldn't be built coming in the Black Hills, and this was rebuted that then. If we're gonna review all that now, this entire subdivision, and the guy that went broke, other contractors have gone broke in subdivisions, and people have gone together and put their own water companies together, uh, to protect their buildable property. So just to look the other way from these conditions, I, I don't think that's wise either.
Well, I, I think, I think, uh, when there was going to be, you know, fifty homes, fifty more septic systems.
What makes you think somebody's not gonna come back and wanna build some more?
Well, but they would have to come back and, and redo the planning and everything, it's, it's.
Or get a water company.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be redone. Right now, the only thing that's planted is, is whatever, the ten lots.
A water company would solve the water issue, and if they stay with the other, um, instructions listed on their plat, those people, other people own these properties too, somebody does.
Yeah, it's my understanding, I think they're all sold, actually.
Right.
It's just, the, the bad part about this whole development is when it was, when these lots were sold, they weren't sold to the buyers with the understanding of what this was going, what was going on. Nobody knew about it until the Schmitz decided to get the building permit. So they are the very first ones to apply for a building permit in Mountain Meadows. So, and then the other, the, the neighbors that we've ran into and talked to down there that have bought lots, so far, again, we have not talked to anybody.
Their real estate person didn't indicate to them that they were part of a, a development?
So, yeah, they give them Rushmore Ranchettes covenants, which don't list any of this. The only place that this is noted is on the small print on the plat. Um, for the whole subdivision, it's not on, when you get a, the survey of the individual lot, it's not on there, it's not in the covenants.
They would've got supplied a plat from their, uh, insurance, their property insurance.
Again, I'm not saying, so they did eventually get a plat, and it's in this small print, which the normal homeowner, you know, none of this makes any.
Would they go through those at closing, I'm saying somebody supplied a plat to them at closing, they knew what they bought.
Well, yes, they could've known what they bought, it was on this plat in very small print. It would've been nice had the realtors that represented the property just told these people, hey, you know, when you're buying these lots, keep in mind, you're gonna have to get past this storage water issue, or you won't get a building permit. You're, you're gonna have to put a sprinkler system in if you get past that, and you're gonna have to do a more expensive setup system.
Understand, but when you close on a property, the insurance, the property insurance people, supply you with corner pins, marks, what's your property, what you bought?
Correct. A- again, I'm just saying, this is why it's gonna come up with all of these lots. Is these just happen to be the first, first people, but that's why all these other people that bought lots in the subdivision are also gonna find out. A- and while we're talking about just lot four, so if there's seven other, ten other lots in there that people are building on, this is gonna come up as an issue.
I have a lot of compassion for them, but this board also has a lot of additional properties we're gonna be reviewing down the road, once we set, start setting precedent.
So the, the biggest issue obviously was the storage tank, because that's not feasible for a homeowner to do. I mean, that's over a hundred thousand dollars, I'm sure. So that part being met, they can get a building permit. When this variance was done, you know, again, all of us, we didn't know exactly what was going on, why these few lots had these issues, you know, planted, and where most subdivisions you see don't have them at this point.
Who, who owns the water system? Uh, who owns the fire hydrants, who owns the mains and the road?
Southern Hills Water.
So Southern Hills put them in, or Southern Hills bought after the developer put them in?
Both, yeah. So they bought Rushmore Ranchette's system that was already there, and then they've added to it since.
Okay. Alright.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
I, I can say, you know, at, at the Board of Adjustments, the Southern Hills, you know, there was testimony that of the fire hydrant, the flows, some other residents were using, uh, restrictors on their flow for their housing and so forth. So that wasn't a discussion of all that, that's why they waived the storage thing. And I believe, you know, that, that was the insight on that part. I think you're right, we're gonna have problems going further on, but I think Southern Hills is probably gonna have to set, step up. I, I tend to agree, the plat is by the time you read this, it's too late, I'm already committed.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, you're, you're closing, you're going through hundreds of pages of, of paperwork. I do agree, realtor should've been, or somebody should've done an investigation. And, and maybe this is gonna bring light to that, to the, the, the future owners out there, so that maybe they'll get together and everybody will work together, try to get that additional storage after this. It's, it's a shame that we have to get to this point, to get the, that information out to the new people. But hopefully that will come from this.
And ag- and again, it's not like they can't put a fire out, they will still hook up to the hydrant, they will still, you know, do everything. Whether they'll notice the gallons, you know, the thousand versus the six hundred and fifty, I don't know, but.
The aquifer, I'm not backing down on, but I mean.
The only other thing I was gonna add was the thousand gallons comes from state recommended fire requirements. It, it isn't something the county pulled out of the air.
No, and again, it's for, from what we found out, it's, it's about how much, you know, like a three thousand foot, square foot structure needs so much water, is what they're wanting, and that's the thousand gallons. The six hundred and fifty gallons per minute would be more than adequate to put out a fourteen hundred square foot fire. And the, and the pressure coming out of that hydrant was just fine.
Okay. Sure, we can wait until we're done questions with him, and then I'll call you up.
And then as far as the AquaSafe septic system, it's just my understanding, if I have a, a perk test that does not pass the conventional, that I can't put an AquaSafe septic design and make it pass that way. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't actually.
So on the, on the perk test, on the septic system, this AquaSafe system has not been approved by the state as far as if, if this, so first of all, this perk test still has to pass. So if it, if it were to fail, a perk test, I can't simply add an AquaSafe system to it and then have it pass. Is that correct?
I'll, I'll try to answer that question, sorry, Brittany Molliter, again. I think we're gonna muddy in the water here a little bit, because a percolation test and soil profile, there's two steps when it comes to looking at onsite wastewater treatment systems. Percolation has to do with, um, how fast it flows through the material. The profile hole has to do with the location of bedrock and the soil horizon. So when we look at the soil horizons, you have to have four foot of separation between any kind of bedrock layer and the surface in order to put a conventional system in. In that area, I can tell you that of recently, probably in the last year, there have been several sites that have needed either a mound system or an ET bed. There's actually one system, or one lot up there that has holding tanks, because there is absolutely no soils on that property. Um, so that is probably the reason for these. We do have a whole subdivision, Canyon Springs AquaSafe is approved by the state. AquaSafe has been used, uh, quite a bit throughout our company. During the plating process for Canyon Springs, there's a whole engineering report, um, on utilizing AquaSafes, um, in these instances. There are community drain fields in Canyon Springs, um, that these AquaSafe systems go to. Um, so the AquaSafe system is essentially a tertiary treatment. So it would go to a regular concrete septic tank, then it would go into these AquaSafe units, and then it would go into the drain field. Um, the removal rates for nitrogen and E coli and BOD are significant through these systems. Uh, so the loading coming out, um, into the soils is significantly reduced by using these systems.
Okay. Any more questions, uh, for Wester? Okay. Any more questions, uh, for Wester, for Mr. Willmuss?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
What, how much do these lots cost and how big are they?
Uh, I don't know. The current, I think sixty thousand dollars is what Schmitz had paid for their lot.
Okay. And, and the lot is three acres or forty acres?
Three point zero three.
A- and again, as a, a potential buyer, when you go to these lots, they have a water shut off valve right there. They've got fire hydrants. Um, you know, there, there isn't anything that would make you think that you would be required to have a sprinkler system of some kind when you're looking at a fire hydrant basically on your lot and water tap there and, you know, that kind of thing. And then it's, so, so again, it's just, it's, it is a bad situation when people find out about this after they've bought the lot. But it's, cost wise, the biggest thing was that storage tank is not feasible at all. These other two parts of it, I mean, uh, they're, they're going to add fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars to the cost. Um, and it's just whether it's actually worth, I mean, worth doing. I mean, is it really worth having a seven thousand dollar sprinkler system in this house with a fire hydrant that's, you know, right there, that can be used. And then as far as the AquaSafe design, I'm just saying in this particular lot's case, the perk test was done, the, the profile hole was done, there's adequate soils there, the perk test passed. Um, there's going to be, again, fifty-seven other properties that don't have this design. And at this point, there'd be seven that would.
So you'd suggest we just take care of this particular issue for the Schmitz? And then the next guy who comes along wants to build something, he can go through the same process and we can give him.
And I'm sure it's case by case. The next person may have fifteen thousand dollars laying around to put a sprinkler system in and do the AquaSafe and could care less about that and, and only find out that they don't want to pay the six figures for the storage holding tank. I don't know.
Go ahead, Cody.
So, uh, Cody, who's Sack with the Planning Department, staff would recommend to change the, the recommendation to, um, vacate notes thirteen and fourteen in accordance with the variance is approved by the Board of Adjustment, but to keep notes seven, eight, nine, and twelve. Also, um, we keep bringing the sprinklers into it, though that variance was not approved. Um, so that, that can't, that can't be vacated and it was an agreement at the Board of Adjustment meeting with the applicants that the water storage variance would be approved if they put sprinklers in the house. So, uh, note number twelve cannot be vacated.
And are you saying that you would vacate notes thirteen and fourteen just for a lot?
Just for lot four.
Four or for the whole plat?
For lot four, block one. We can't vacate the whole plat because we'd need everybody's signature from everybody in the subdivision.
Got it. Further questions for Mr. Willmuss?
Okay, just one more. Then that basically supports the action taken by the County Commission the other day.
Correct, yes.
So at this point, the Schmitz are planning, willing to spend the seven thousand dollars on the sprinkler system. Um, what they would like to try to do because of the acceptable perk test and profile hole is see if they could at least save the money on the AquaSafe design and not have to spend that seven thousand dollars as well. That's pretty much where we're at with.
Okay.
So we would have to decide which is the greater risk. Right? I mean.
I guess one more septic system without AquaSafe in the area, I don't know is a great risk when you, you know, nobody else has one. I, I don't know. And the chances of the fire, I don't know how great of a risk that is either, but at this point, we've agreed to put the sprinkler system in and we'll do that and.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Chair.
This for you, Brittany. This sure shows when a number of years back, we talked about doing overlay districts so that people would know about buildable property and where these things that they're going to run into these even without notes on there. Um, I just would like to make a mental note to you and, and it may be something that in the future, we're having more and more pressure from outside, uh, buyers from out of the area, that they need to know where these areas are, that we're going to stay infirm about, uh, building, uh, in regards to septic requirements.
And to comment on that, I do believe that that was taken into consideration when the plat of this lot was done. Um, if you do look at the profile holes in the area, they are hit or miss, um, up there, just depending upon, um, like what Cody had spoke about, the, the separation of soils. Um, just one note, you know, the concentration of onsite wastewater systems in, in an area irregardless or typically the loading is what is the concern.
Thank you. And, and what I'm pointing out is the developer knew when he filed these, obviously. And he'd been instructed through your department, through the commission and obviously the planning commission. But I think we need to, to go a little bit farther and, and allow some of these to be available to them. And those overlay districts is, is a way to approach it. Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Willmuss? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, did you want to come up and, and speak? No? Okay. So, uh, is there further discussion from anybody in the audience on this item?
Ron, Ross Connect, Pennington County Commissioner, District One. Uh, just want to clarify that after this meeting, Janelle Fisk is a very, uh, respected engineer in Rapid City, came up and, and she stated her opinion on this plat. She said that these notes on these plants can really cause a lot of problems because they're just a note and they don't go in the detail. And she said in the future, she would highly suggest that you don't see notes on plants like this because this is why we're here for an hour of the day and not getting nowhere and putting a lot of burden on taxpayers. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm not taking a position one way or another, but I think that we have to really be careful, uh, with what we put on plots in the future because all it is is a statement and it does not go in the detail. For an example, if those sixty-five homes burned down tomorrow, you didn't have sixty-five homes, could you still build? I mean, there's just, just a lot of, uh, open ends there. So just wanted to mention that.
Mr. Chair, Ron? Ron? I doubt whether we see these notes when we're talking about an individual plat for an individual builder. Uh, it tends to be, the notes I've seen like this are ones that ran all the way up to you folks and were reviewed and it had to do with, uh, delicate conditions that were on the property. Uh, and they're developing a number of lots and people understand them supposedly so the customer can know in advance. And if these aren't being passed on by, by real estate people, I don't know that in any form. I don't know that w- we should change our thinking is what I'm suggesting. And I know Janelle too, and I agree with you. She's an excellent, uh, voice on this sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, an engineer.
But she hasn't got me convinced right now.
That's fine. I just, uh, I put a lot of effort on this particular subject and I did a lot of research. And I just, uh, I just wanted to, uh, Janelle's not here, but I just wanted to convey what she told us that day. And so, you know, we can do with it what we want.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
In light of, of, uh, staff's recommendations of changing to approve, I would move to approve, uh, BP twenty-one dash two with one condition, with the notes of only thirteen and fourteen be vacated from the Mountain Meadows plat for lot four, block one.
Is everyone clear on the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion in second to approve, um, the, uh, VP twenty-one dash zero two, uh, with that only notes thirteen and fourteen be vacated from the Mountain Meadows plat for lot four, block one.
Just a follow up. I, I just wanted to get a motion on, on the floor because this has been a, a, a long strenuous deal for not only the applicants, but, uh, everybody involved. And like I said, I hope, hopefully out of all this, the future landowners out there will be well advised and maybe some can come together with this, but I, I, I believe we all learned from this and I believe there's going to be some changes in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Chair.
Yeah, I, I sort of agree with Lloyd, but I, I think this is, uh, indicative of the fact that we, we, uh, Ross mentioned something about we don't need all this information. It seems to me that the problem is we don't mandate enough information. The tendency is to allow people to purchase property without sufficient consumer information. I mean, and putting it on, uh, on this plat, of course, is, i- is not the way to do it, but maybe holding real estate people responsible for some of these things and insisting, yeah, I know, we laugh and other states, however, apply, uh, efforts that can be more effective in this regard. I mean, we just, because then we are fixing these things and I'm sympathetic to the applicant for crying out loud. We can all imagine ourselves in the same circumstance. But, uh, but I, I think part of it is we need more information out there, not less. And, um, if it costs a little more, it costs a little more.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, I, I take, so I appreciate the fact that the sprinklers really are non-negotiable because that has been agreed on in exchange for the water capacity. Regarding the, um, the, um, Aqua units on the, the septic system, you know, I'm, I'm a geologist by education and training and so on, but, and I, I know, I know a couple of things. I know one, that the Madison Aquifer really does outcrop in certain areas surrounding the Black Hills. I haven't studied the maps recently, but I, this is in a prime position for being outcrop of the Madison. Um, I think that my guess would be that at the time this was placed as a note on the plat, there was some study done on this to understand how this has positioned itself with the Madison. And there would probably, was probably a very good reason why this was placed, uh, here as a note. Now, also considering the information that, uh, Brittany, uh, supplied, that there are some of the lots, some of the houses that do have these conventional systems have had to update these with, with some other implementation because of the problems. You were saying the ones now just using a holding tank because of the problems and is that the area around this that had those other issues come up?
Those were in Rushmore Ranch and that was part of the.
The surrounding area?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, which suggests to me that this really is a vulnerable area. And that some of those are, show the signs of that, those ones in the surrounding area. Is that accurate?
That is correct. There are several of them that have, uh, mound systems. I know that there's two profile holes that we've just done in the last year that we're going to require mound systems for construction.
Right. So I mean, that to me, that reinforces the idea that this is a vulnerable area and there was a good reason why this note was placed on the plat. And so, I mean, I just think, you know, far from us up here, that, you know, hasn't have, we haven't put in the study that's required to this. I mean, why would we overturn some probably thoughtful decision that was made some years ago about protecting the Madison Aquifer and, and it, I mean, it is, it, it, we've heard it said, and I believe it, that, you know, once nitrates get into the Madison Aquifer, that's a very hard process to reverse. So it's important that care get taken upfront. So I, I just couldn't, I, I just could not bring myself to support vacating the notes that have to deal with the, um, with the, um, wastewater treatment unit. And then as I already said, that the ones on the sprinkler is, it's without, outside of our, our purview right now because of the variance. And so, I mean, I, but I do support the decision of the Board of Adjustment on the variance about the increasing the water storage. So I'm, I'm in support of the motion as, as it is on the, on the table.
Okay. Further discussion? Saying none. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this before we vote? Saying none. Um, motion is for approval of VP twenty-one dash zero two, uh, noting that only notes thirteen and fourteen be vacated from the Mountain Meadow plat for lot four, block one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Uh, item sixteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash zero four. It's for Colen Rene Foster. Uh, the property is zoned limited agriculture district with a ten acre minimum. The size of the lot is ten acres. Uh, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash oh four with twenty conditions. When approving conditional use permits are seven criteria that we look at. Number one, the bed and bre- yes, the bed and breakfast takes place entirely within a detached structure and should not be detrimental or endanger the public's safe, safety or general welfare of the public. In talking with the president of the Naughty Pine Road District, Stone Ridge Road does allow two cars to pass each other. In talking with the Pennington County Fire Coordinator, there is no correlation between vacation home rentals with a BMB with increased fire danger. Uh, the Rockerville Fire Department did not comment on an increased fire danger. Uh, number two, because bed and breakfasts are considered a residential use, this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property. That in turn means that granting this, granting it shouldn't have any long-term negative effects, the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The structure is being used as living quarters, whether that would be visiting friends or family or renters, the underlying general use is residential. A neighbor has made the assertion that his property will, value will decrease if the CUP is granted, yet that neighbor has provided noth- nothing to support the claim, no evidence or documentation. In conversations with the Department of Equalization, there's not enough information to determine if a property value will decrease from a rental. Number three, granting a conditional use permit should not affect the orderly, orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Number four, first, the subject property is served by, by a private onsite wastewater treatment system and the water is provided by the Pine Grove Water Association. The Pine Grove Water Association didn't indicate that a bed and breakfast being operated would affect the ability for water, for, for neighboring properties to water availability. That's because the property is served by a cistern, so the property, if the property runs out of water, then it shouldn't affect the neighbors. If the applicant runs out of water, he, he will need to wait for the cistern to refill or haul water to the property. Second, access from the property will be provided by an access located off Stone Ridge Road. According to the Naughty Pine Road District, the easement was signed over to the road district and is maintained by the funds from the road district. The road district does not anticipate, anticipate the affecting access. Number five, access to the property will be provided via Stone Ridge Road. The bed and breakfast takes access off the shared easement with the neighbors in the property. The owner of the property is in favor of the CUP. And nu- number six, the current zoning is limited agriculture district and bed and breakfasts are allowed in the district with a conditional use permit. The lot size is ten acres, which is required for the limited agriculture district. Number seven, future land use of the property is agriculture district, which allows for single-family residents as primary use, bed and breakfasts are allowed, as an accessory use with a CUP. Uh, this was rather drawn for, for comment. Uh, County Highway said that there's no comment since it was part of a road district and should not affect easements. The Rockerville Fire District was routed for, for fire danger. Uh, their comments came back that the, I would, that the separate BMB structure following the same fire-related building regulations as specified by the county for any living quarters. And, uh, a separate address be assigned for, for refounders to find the property. On February second, twenty twenty-one, the Planning Commission continued CU, CU, the CUP to March second, twenty twenty-one, for the applicants to contain, uh, registration for the DOH, uh, sales tax license from DNR and a letter of approval from, uh, the DNR for septic. Those have been, been obtained and submitted to staff. Um, staff contacted the Rockerville Fire District and the fire chief submitted the comments that you heard just a second ago. And staff contacted the Pine Grove Water Association who stated they can serve up to a hundred and fifty taps. Currently, they have a hundred and thirty-four taps. Each property is required of a, a minimum of a thousand gallon cistern. The water district supplies one gallon per minute to the cisterns and the bed and breakfast should not affect the ability for anyone else to access water. Um, March sixteenth, twenty one, twenty one, staff's bump to, um, sorry, one second. The, the president of the road district, you stated that the Stone Ridge Road is a public road that is under the jurisdiction of the road district when the easement was signed over. Stone Ridge is maintained by the road district through its funds. The road district does not have any concerns with the BMB taking access off of Stone Ridge Road. The American Planning Association is the industry standard for planning issues. Its dictionary defines the use as the activity occurring on the lot or parcel for it. The land or building is arranged, designed, intended, or for which the land or building may be occupied, including all accessory structures. The detached garage is living quarters and is used for sleeping, eating and general hydrant that any residence would, no matter if money is exchanged or not. hydrating that any residence would, no matter if money is exchanged or not. In other words, the residential use is in character, not commercial. And according to the Department of Revenue employee, when you have something listed on Airbnb, it does not turn your residence into a commercial property. The Pennington County Fire Coordinator, there is no word of any increased wireland fire danger due to a BMB being operated. The applicant stated there's no fire pits for guests to use. A map and address are provided to the applicants as long with this instruction sheet. Staff has received several comments from the public on this items. They are attached. And a neighbor made an assertion that the property value will decrease if the CUP is granted. In a conversation with the Department of Equalization, there is not enough information to determine if a property value will increase or decrease from the rental. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of CU 21-04 with 20 conditions.
Thank you. Before we get started on this item, it's been requested that we take a five-minute break, not knowing how long this one will last.
I'd like a 10-minute break.
10 minutes?
Yes. Go move.
So, all right. Motion to take a 10-minute break.
10:50 now, so 11 o'clock.
So we will reconvene at 11 o'clock.
It's more...
All right, Cody. It's 11 o'clock, so we will get started again promptly here. So Cody was done going through all of the background information on item 16. And I guess at this point, I will open it up for questions for staff on this item.
Mr. Chair. Cody. I see your conditions, two and three. Is that the new norm now that we're going to take continental breakfasts? Because I noticed your new ordinance suggestion is a homestyle. That was the only reason we're so close to working on the new ordinance. Maybe we ought to stick with homestyle.
I'm calling the state's attorney's office. Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson, excuse me. The family-style meal is imposed by statute. It's 3418, 9.1 through 9.4, one of those. So if it didn't make it in previous CUP applications for a bed and breakfast, it should have, but regardless, the applicant would have to follow state law. But the definition of family-style breakfast is a little bit open. So I think what the condition does is breathe a little bit of life into that.
Yeah, I just know that we reviewed the one for the Bulge regarding continental breakfast, and that's the first time I'd ever seen it referred to that way. And I don't have any hangup either way, but I think we ought to be one way or the other. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, on that point, I don't really understand the reason for even providing any detail. I mean, it's a BMB, so obviously breakfast, but why don't we just stop at breakfast? Why does it have to be described in any particular way?
Commissioner Johnson, that's because the way the legislature wrote the statute leaves it open-ended, to the point where although it is named a bed and breakfast, they could theoretically serve lunch and dinner, but it would have to be for their occupants and not just to the general public. So I couldn't go up there and get dinner if I wasn't...
Right, no, I understand. But why do we have to talk about a continental breakfast and have all these items listed? Why don't we just simply say, "The applicant provides breakfast"?
I believe that's, just to give an example, if I recall correctly, it's EG, so examples of what would qualify as a family-style meal in our interpretation.
I guess I just would prefer just to simply say, "The applicant will provide breakfast", period.
Well, in the past, people running BMBs would just say that they were handing out a granola bar for breakfast, so we were trying to make it more in-depth with what they actually had to.
But why do you care?
Because the state statute says family-style meal, a granola bar is not really a family-style meal.
Let me speak to that briefly. I was in, the last BMB I was in, I think it was in Nebraska, and I got a two-day-old muffin and no coffee. And they handed it to me kind of on the way out the door. So, to your point, that's exceptional. It's not ordinary. But it's a little consumer protection here, quite frankly. You know, if we're going to have breakfast, we can define it. It's not very elaborate, but at least, and when I said something to the woman, she said, "It's breakfast." So I wasn't going to argue with her, but needless to say, I'm not going back, and so I'm sympathetic.
Further questions for staff before we go to the speaker request forms? Okay. First speaker request form I have is Linda Briesmeister.
Would you like Jared to speak to me, and I would follow him if that's all right?
No problem. Mr. Noonie, do you want to come forth?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jared Noonie. I'm an attorney at Noonie &amp; Soleil LLP in Rapid City, South Dakota. I represent Pat and Linda Briesmeister. Pat and Linda Briesmeisters are the bordering property to the applicants Cole and Rene Foster. I submitted a letter on March 16th of 2021, which should be included in the packet. You guys have that, so I'm not going to read it repeatedly. I'm going to harp on some important points on why the CUP should be denied. More or less pursuant to planning, excuse me, Pennington County zoning, Section 510, there's seven areas of criteria that must be evaluated when determining approval of a conditional use permit. The first criteria provides that the conditional use shall not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. As you saw from the video that was played earlier, the access to the Fosters Airbnb, which I'm going to call, you know, more or less a commercial property, I understand you guys don't look at it that way, but obviously, it is a commercial property. From my aspect, it is for one purpose, for the Fosters' personal profit. More or less, that traffic is, it's through one egress and ingress to and from the property. Once you pass my client's property, if you're headed pretty much just south and then it goes back west, more or less, there are going to be five additional properties that use that one egress and ingress, which is one-way and which is an easement. It's a right-of-way easement to get to the Fosters' property. And more or less, I would direct your attention, if you look, my clients are located at 24021 Stone Ridge Road. I believe the video actually depicted it past my client's property headed to Fosters, which would be 24028. If you come from Naughty Pines down, it's a bottleneck coming to my client's property and around the corner. I think that's very important to understand, if you actually understand the topography of where you're coming down to access the Fosters' property. So more or less, there's going to be additional traffic. Obviously, this is Airbnb. We're in 2021. It's pretty easy to find an Airbnb rather than go rent a hotel room in Rapid City, South Dakota. So more or less, the additional traffic creates a great safety concern. A prime example would be on March 12th of 2021, my clients had a vehicle with Colorado plates pull up to their driveway at 8:55 PM. I would mind you, it is pitch dark at 8:55 PM. If there were to be an emergency at that time, if there would have been a fire, EMTs, law enforcement, whoever would have been required to go to an emergency from my client's property at 24021 Stone Ridge further down, it wouldn't have been accessible. My clients frequently have people come to their property, park in the driveway, and ask, "Is this Cole's place?" I can ask all you this, I don't know how you'd feel, but I can tell you if somebody's pulling up to my driveway when it's pitch dark, asking this is the neighboring property, I probably wouldn't be too happy, let alone feel safe. Frequently, my clients have individuals who are staying at the Fosters' Airbnb stop at their property, not only asking if it's Cole's place, yelling out the windows, taking pictures. I mean, that affects their personal use and enjoyment, and I would just echo this. This is the majority view of the neighboring properties. If we look at criteria two, it provides that the use, value, and enjoyment should not be impaired or diminished. My client, Mr. Briesmeister, has had discussions with Mr. Ron Rosneck. He gives a pretty good example. The Briesmeisters have a bundle of sticks. That's their property rights. In law school, they always teach you, "Your property rights are a bundle of sticks." If this conditional use permit is approved, that takes away some of those sticks from my clients. Not only from my clients, but the neighboring properties, who again, the majority do not, the majority disprove and oppose the CUP. This negatively impacts their property values, and specifically, more or less, if any of these neighboring properties, you know, these property owners that like to go sell their properties, there's going to be a disconnect, it's probably going to increase the time. And even in today's market, I mean, that negatively impacts them as property owners next to the Fosters' property, which obviously the CUP is for. The state of South Dakota clearly agrees that this conditional use permit is commercial. The state of South Dakota is going to require, or did require, a state-approved letter for an onsite wastewater treatment system, as well as a sales tax license. If that's not commercial, I don't know what is. Criteria three provides that the conditional use permit will not impede on the normal development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted by the district. The property use, again, the state of South Dakota clearly views it as commercial. If I'm having, you know, my family or friends come stay at my house, I can tell you this, I surely don't need a sales tax license. Approving the Fosters' conditional use permit for commercial use, their personal intended profit is strictly commercial and is against the residential aspects for this area. Criteria four provides that there should be adequate utilities, access to drainage, and other necessary site improvements. There's only one access, like I said, one ingress and egress to get to Fosters' property. This is used by the neighboring properties. Like I said, there's five properties that access this after the Briesmeisters. Again, on February 22nd, at 8:55 PM, my clients had the burden of somebody pull up in their driveway with Colorado plates. Again, I think that myself, and I would bet most people here, would agree that that would make you feel uncomfortable. When you look at criteria five, it provides that there should be adequate measures taken for ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion. Again, if there was an emergency and EMTs, law enforcement, or the fire department had to access the properties, I mean, it creates a great safety concern for not only the Briesmeisters, but the additional property owners after, to the southwest, after the Briesmeisters' property. In addition to the increased traffic and safety concerns from the Airbnb guest, the Fosters use, I assume Amazon, but they're using a commercial supplier, per se, to bring supplies to the property for the Airbnb guest. So there is additional commercial traffic of UPS vehicles and FedEx vehicles. And as you saw from even the widest part of the road, you couldn't have two vehicles, especially if there was an emergency, to allow one, you know, one emergency vehicle to pass another Airbnb guest trying to access Fosters' property, let alone a big commercial FedEx or UPS vehicle. If you look at criteria six, this provides that the conditional use will conform to all applicable regulations. Again, I don't know why you need a sales tax license if this is not commercial. Criteria seven provides that the conditional use is consistent with the adopted county comprehensive plan. Specifically, if you look at Section 7.2, Public Safety Overview of the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, which would be the view to 2040, it provides, quote, "Providing fire protection in a rural forested area is not the same as fire protection within a city. Response times to fire emergencies are generally slower. The road network may not allow for easy access to a fire, and some substandard roads may not accommodate current firefighting apparatuses. As the county continues to grow and develop, effort should be made to mitigate fire dangers in rural areas." I think we can all agree that this location of Fosters' CUP is in a rural area, and it's in a forested area. Providing fire protection to this rural forested area is obviously very different than providing fire protection in the city. In anywhere in Pennington County, especially the city of Rapid City, it's very different. The response time for an emergency, specifically a fire, would be slower, and the road network to get to the Fosters on the one-lane private right-of-way easement would be very difficult. Specifically, that's just one ingress and egress to get to the Fosters' commercial Airbnb. For this reason, I would respectfully request that the CUP be denied.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Noonie?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Jim.
You're concerned about access.
Yes.
You think that the use of that property as a BMB will materially reduce access?
I mean, I do, yeah. If you...
What is your standard? How do you measure that? I mean, it's just a supposition you're making?
Well, I mean, I would just say this. I think it speaks pretty truly that the majority of the surrounding property owners are against and opposed to the CUP being granted.
That isn't what I ask you.
Well, there is obviously a concern.
I ask you for a standard to determine why there might be a risk involved here. And you tell me that it's because some neighbors object, and that's sufficient? Should we deny these people because the neighbors have a disinclination to have people with Colorado license plates in the neighborhood?
No, that's, it'd be a subjective standard. But I think it speaks pretty true that when there is a majority view of a concern, whether it be a safety standard primarily, that if the majority owners with the surrounding property view that, I think that's beyond a subjective point, getting to be more of an objective standard.
So two people in a neighborhood, your neighbor has an absolute veto over what you choose to do? That's your standard?
No, but you also said two. This isn't two.
No. You said a standard. I mean, I find it just difficult to entertain these arguments, because I don't really think they're arguments. They're just assertions. I know that the person who lives there is upset. Okay, that's fine.
It's not a person.
For crying out loud, you're not giving us any decent reason to reject this application.
I think if you'd go back and actually review the seven criteria, there is a significant reason.
I've heard them a few times.
It's easier to check the box and say, "Yes, approved," than denied. I understand that, and I have read the recommendations. Don't kid yourself, but...
Now, I suppose we would complicate things if, in terms of safety, if the Fosters' grandkids showed up in large numbers. But that would be okay, even though there would be a risk involved, because they could clog up the egress and the exit just as easily. They are family. You would accept that they could come and spend as much time with their grandparents as they wanted to, right?
Absolutely. But I can tell you...
But it would lead to the same result, would it not, theoretically?
It's very different.
It is, okay.
Because if you look at a commercial Airbnb, it's pretty easy for me to pull out my phone right now, and I can go find wherever I want to stay. That's pretty accessible versus a set of grandchildren, which even if they reside in Rapid City, I can tell you, they're probably not going to be there on a daily basis.
Do you think these people rent this every day? Do you know how often they rent it?
The statistics.
How often do BMBs get rented, vacation home rentals? What's the normal? You don't know.
I don't have the statistics.
I don't know either. But I'd make a good guess that it isn't very often, even in the summertime, because there's hundreds of them out there.
Well, considering our driving economy in the Black Hills is, obviously, people coming and visiting and tourists, I disagree with your position.
But you don't have any numbers or anything. We can't make any judgment. It's just sort of a feeling that, you know, that's what I don't like.
If there's litigation brought, I guess, yes, I could subpoena, but until then, absolutely, no, I don't have the right to access that information.
Well, I have never seen a vacation home rental application I didn't like. Now, that isn't because my standards are low, it's because I think this ordinance is extremely well-written, and 99.9% of the people who make an application are serious, decent people who are not interested in offending their neighbors.
And I don't doubt that the Fosters are...
That has fallen into place because we tend to approve these because our experience has been stellar.
And that's fine, and I don't doubt the Fosters are good people. I'm just, this particular property and this access for the ingress and egress is a concern.
Okay. Further questions for Mr. Noonie?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
I struggle with this because, as Jim just said, you know, the insertions of a vacation home rental or a BMB... of, of a vacation rental or a B and B is, you know, people keep pushing out there that it's all for the money and it's all for, you know, just like you said, UPS trucks are delivering their supplies for this place while every owner, property owner out there orders stuff, probably no more than any other average person. You know, a- and I have rental properties and I, I've got one vacation rental that I've had for one year and I can tell you the numbers aren't as great as you think and it's, I'd be lucky, I barely broke even last year making my payments, insurance, the upkeep, so forth, so it's not a profit. You know, it was more for, uh, so I can have a place to stay when I decide to retire and help pay for it now. That could very well be the same thing with these people, it's additional income to help upkeep on the property and so forth. I've seen people, it, we sit, we tend to, uh, criticize homeowners for doing something like this, finding lots of reasons to say why they can't do it. But let me tell you, there's a lot of property owners out there who don't keep up on their properties, who are worse neighbors than, uh, a vacation rental would ever be, you know? And, but yet that's okay because they're property owners. You know, you know what I'm saying?
I, I, I get it, I just, I think it's a case-by-case basis clearly because otherwise if a CUP was as easy to get, it would be a, a stamp and then you wouldn't even look at a specific property or the intended use and-
Let me follow up on that, it's not as easy as you think, there's money involved, licenses to get, inspections that have to be done, follow-ups on a yearly basis if there's concerns from your neighbors. It, it's not an easy process for, for anybody. So for someone to go through that and do that, I will tell you, you know, uh, vacation, from my experience, vacation home rental people are, are not only reviewed, but they're also better behavior because they have to put the deposit down or they're responsible for any damages or- So you get good-willing people just looking for a place to be more comfortable with their family. You know, that's my experience and even I've rented plenty, that's the first thing I look for outside when I travel, but I've also seen to where it's getting to be too costly to where motel's cheaper now. So with all the restrictions and requirements of, of these property owners, people are staying at motels. To insin- I've, I've seen people say we're taking away the business or they're taking away the business from the locals. It's not, it, it's, it's a shared deal. And just be considerate as far as thinking that not everybody's in it to make, there are companies out there, that's what they do, but there are plenty of people that do it for supplemental income. And quite frankly, I had one that lived across the street from me for two years, I didn't even know.
A- a- and I get that, you, you said it well, that more or less, obviously, there's a lot of work behind this and my point is, if you look at this specific CUP, the ingress and egress is a safety concern.
They shouldn't develop that, then.
Should have, could have, would have, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with that, but it'd be extremely costly. And in Cole's own words, he said, "The, the road next to the fence is, quote, tight."
This is my two thought, two cents, sorry.
Kathy?
Yeah, I'm just, speaking of the road, um, I noticed in the, um, staff report, the staff says that in talking with the president of the Naughty Pine Road District, Stone Ridge Road does allow two cars to pass each other, do you disagree with that?
I, I do, especially given the, the video we just saw, which would have been, would not be at the bottleneck, you know, closer to, closer to my client's property, but I, I think it would be very difficult based on that video we saw to have two vehicles pass one another, especially if it was a larger, uh, emergency vehicle like a fire truck or-
Happens now when two vehicles meet on that road?
I, I don't live there, so I can't tell you, I guess I would just defer to my clients on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
We can wait till we come, go ahead, Charlie.
Um, Mr. Noonie, I, I listened closely to what you've, you've gone through and I, and I have read your, I appreciate your review with some of your comments. But I see that this request is actually, the support for it and the support, uh, to oppose it is more generational than anything, the more I've read through this. And I mean, there's the generation gap in how you think. Uh, access versus today's thoughts on property access, you know, who should be, uh, invited guests versus uninvited guests. Senior oversight versus younger oversight, what they think when they buy a piece of property. And finally, public road versus access road. And I saw the word "public road" finally installed in this, uh, by our staff and, and your thoughts. Because I had some thoughts on the public road versus the access road and there's no question, the older folks that originally put the access to the properties, I doubt whether they thought about vacation home rentals, do you think they did?
Absolutely not, I agree with you.
So I think I see a generational, uh, review difference in this and, and that's where I'm sitting here trying to, to fish through. And I appreciate your organization, your, your thoughts, uh, for your client, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions for Mr. Noonie? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For coming up. Um, next on the speaker request form, um, was Linda Briesmeister.
May I take my mask off?
Sure.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just wanted to ask, how many of the commissioners here actually live in the Black Hills? Any?
I can't hear you.
How many commissioners actually live in the Black Hills?
We all live in the Black Hills.
Yeah, do, do you consider Rapid City to be the Black Hills?
Do you have a house in a wooded area with one dirt road with limited access? Why did you choose to live there?
I don't really think this is a topic-
Yeah, and I, I don't think we're all on trial here, but if you want to get to your comments.
We chose to live in the Black Hills over a subdivision, over living in Rapid City because of the space, the nature, the beauty. We feed over twenty deer and thirty turkey and they cross that road. We moved there for the peace and quiet and quality of life. But mainly, we moved there because of the safety and security and privacy of living in a rural community. We live at the entrance of the road into our small community of five other homes. Our neighbors all appreciate independence and privacy and security, you can see why, because how the houses are situated there. We've helped the Fosters, I've helped move their horse Roxy back when she escaped. There are two Burrows, Dixie and Divanscape, I took them back with the help of neighbors. I call neighbors when there's smoke in the area and there is smoke in the area, we look out for each other. I make their kids Halloween treats and Christmas cookies. So I want you to understand, this isn't, you know, neighbor versus neighbor. My husband plows the entire easement past Naughty Pine Road to where our mailboxes are, all the way around to the Y. He even plows the road back to our neighbor who lives in a further isolated off that road over there. Cole has the snow removal property to take care of his own property. I just want you to understand the nature of our neighborhood. Fire danger is a concern. And just last week, and Jared mentioned, we're watching T V and see lights now, there are no streetlights here. It's black at night and a car pulls up your driveway, that's only one in- instance. I have to laugh at the Foster's notice of the directions to their house because if you look at this map, people generally come down this road here and they're wondering, "How far do I have to go?" Over the past three years that they've illegally run this, being, you know, the property was run illegally, we can trace that back on Airbnb. They just posted for a permit because we pushed them to do that. So the good people who ran this properly illegally have had numerous cars and from what we can tell, it's rented nearly every weekend. That's, we sit on our deck and see license plate after license plate. That's finally when we realize out-of-state license plates were passing our home. This one incidence of coming up our driveway is one of nine to ten over the past three years. People have, and you're talking about road obstruction, we have to pull off to the side into the meadow in order for another car to pass. People have done that, people have done that at the end of our driveway to change a baby diaper. They've come up the driveway to take pictures of the deer and the turkeys that we feed up our driveway. They've come up our driveway to say hi to me as I'm working in my garden, asking me about the area or directions. That's an imposition, I am not a tour guide. More people stop by my house to ask how to get to Cole's. Now, I'm going to say that I am here because I received a notice. What's the purpose of the notice if you're not going to follow what people say? The majority of homeowners say they don't want this. What's the use of having a notice if you're not going to listen to what they have to say? You know, in the past, in the last session that I was here, I heard staff reports stating that the physical structures are in harmony. What about the people who are there? Is it in harmony with the neighborhood? You know, I moved out there for a reason, for the safety and for the general welfare of living in that community. And I certainly hope that you keep in mind the impact that it has on a neighborhood when the majority of people say they don't want this, that doesn't count? Then why do a notice? Thank you.
I have a quick question. Ma'am, you say the majority, I mean, I understand you're opposed, there are five homes. Who are the other, of the other four, which of those disapprove?
Well, actually, you're talking about the homes, but the surrounding area, the people who are on Rodeo Road, which-
Yeah, you've indicated the majority and I want to know how many.
Uh, let's see. Is it six of eight? And one unknown. Those are in your notes, aren't they?
Well, ye- yes, but, but when you say majority, I just wanted clarification on your point of view of what the majority meant.
Okay, yes, six of eight and one hasn't responded.
Thank you.
Road off of Stone Ridge that my husband plows, there is a young lady, a single woman, who uses only that road, that's her only way out. She wasn't part of the notification because she was, didn't meet the criteria for how many feet within-
I understand, thank you.
I didn't include her in that count.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further questions? For Mrs. Briesmeister?
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, next speaker request form I have is from Lowell, Lowell Kolb.
I am Lowell Kolb, um, you've already received an, an email from my wife, Marilyn Maxwell, and that is in your folder. So I won't belabor anything that's in there. I'll just speak to things that I've heard today, uh, we are in, um, we support the, uh, the Foster's, um, uh, request for a, for the permit. Okay, first I need to tell you, we live at twenty-four oh thirty-two, that is the, uh, the next house, um, past Foster's on that driveway. It's about two hundred feet away from the, uh, um, the garage where they have their bed and breakfast. First of all, I'd like to say that the, um, the people that they've had staying there are, uh, are polite and are respectful and I've not had any problems with their guests. I live on that road, I drive it pretty much daily, I meet someone on that road maybe once a month. It's not heavily used. And there is room, for most of the road, there's room to pass on it. The, uh, the, um, the video that you saw is plenty wide enough for two vehicles to pass that done it. And, uh, with regard to commercial properties, um, I'm no expert on this, but I do know that there are, are many private contractors, uh, you know, one person who's a, a tradesman who, uh, who does his, is, um, does his bookwork on the, the kitchen table. Does that make his property commercial just because he is, he's operating his private business from his home? If that's the case, then, um, one of the things we need to thank the, uh, the epidemic for is that there are thousands of us who are working at home illegally because, um, I'm getting paid to work from home. So, um, yeah, with regard to the, the survey, I don't recall being asked, um, or it, it could have been easy to make, make the assumption that I was in support. But I wasn't, I wasn't contacted on this, um, the, um, survey of the neighborhood as to whether or not, um, um, we approved of the, um, the, the use permit. I think that's enough, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Kolb?
How long have you lived there?
Six years.
And, uh, you moved out there because you also wanted some quiet and some?
Um, yeah. My wife and I both went to School of Mines, we spent forty years in Colorado and watched it turn from a nice state into California. And so we decided when we were going to retire that we'd come back. And since we liked the Black Hills, having been, well, we went to School of Mines. So, um, we're familiar with the area, we found a nice place, it didn't have covenants and you'd be surprised how few choices there are, um, yeah, even six years ago. And we love this property, it's, it's beautiful, we consider it a blessing to live out there. But one of the, uh, one of the natural resources of South Dakota is the people. We also like the people that, that we lived with. Foster's typically, uh, he's got a better rig than I have for moving snow, so he'll typically have my driveway, cleared before I'm even up in the morning, sometimes it sets me off because I've got the snowblower and I want to use it. Okay, no, that's, that's an exaggeration, I shouldn't have said that. But yeah, we do like the people in South Dakota and, um, w- we think we've got plenty of privacy, all that we need. Other questions? Sorry if I run off, you should be careful about asking me a question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For your comments. Um, next speaker request form I have is from Cole Foster.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, first thing I want to address is the, the six out of eight people that they say are there against it. Uh, there was only six letters that were sent out and I know of three of them that are for it, so. So that's, that was my concern that if I go out far enough, I'm sure I could probably find other people that would be for it too. I just want my area supposed to. And as far as, uh, the March twelfth, um, car that stopped in their yard with Colorado plates, um, there was actually somewhere at their house that time, but they had Sioux Falls plates. They weren't even from Colorado, they're from Minnesota. And so I'm not sure who stopped at their house, but it wasn't my people because they're totally different state tags. And as far as was brought up too, uh, safety concern and fire and everything like that. And as far as was brought up too, uh, safety concern and fire and everything like that, the people at my Airbnb, um, would that be more important than us that live there? Simply because we haven't had that issue? So that, I don't understand that point either. And it was brought up that there was a theft too at some point because of my Airbnb people. That theft occurred about ten years ago, about seven years before I bought the property. So it makes no sense to even bring it up. And I'm sure there's probably public record of that too. It was a property directly south of me. He was in the nursing home and somebody vandalized his house. But I said about ten years ago. And the roadway coming in has a twenty-foot easement. And I did say it was tight, um, in my previous comments. Tight doesn't mean impassable. That means you're going to get pretty close. We are a family of six, and the FedEx trucks coming in and UPS trucks, we do rely a lot on deliveries. We have four kids. You don't like taking them to stores. I mean, yeah, we do order a lot online. And that's not solely for Airbnb. Most of it's for our house. And safety concerns, fire dangers, things like that, uh, we keep our property really mowed up. I've went through, took out trees, hauled off, I even bought a wood chipper as opposed to burning. It goes on the back of my tractor. It takes four and a half inch diameter logs and you can, that's done. Road issues, or, or sorry, water issues, um, never had an issue with it. Uh, we have Sistern on site. I've never ran out of water, other than when they were changing the pump out for the system. And the price increase on our water was simply due to, they put off for a long time and the letter they sent all of us. And when we bought the property, it was actually a rental prior to that. It was a rental. It was zoned, um, so I had to do owner occupied status when I moved in because it was not owner occupied status. So it was being rented out to long-term rental renters. And since we moved in, we have done a ton of updates. Um, I paid for all the building permits that the previous owner did not get, along with penalties, so it was, you know, double. And I paid all that. Um, we bought lodging permit, tax license, brand new septic system, which I did not know was non-compliant when we bought the house. Um, so we brought that into code. Uh, I bought a sign permit for my forbade sign that's on my fence to make it easier for people to find our house. I also included a picture of my neighbors, the rock where they have their address. And it's very hard to read it. So I could see why that would be an issue.
Excuse me. We'll let him talk. If you have some comments afterwards, we'll call you back up. Thank you.
And we also have, um, we went and mowed the ditch that's on the, um, the road that was annexed then, just for safety wise. We mowed that and then we were told not to do that anymore. And also my letter was talking about trash being on the property, a Doritos bag and a water bottle. And then I, I'm not going to go on that property because we've been threatened if we're trespass on there that we will be turned in. So I, at what point do, you know, give and take on that? So.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Lloyd. I have a question, Cole.
Yeah.
What made you decide to do an Airbnb?
Uh, when we bought the property, um, the listing, which I have a copy of, it said that it was a great place for, above the garage is a great place for renters, uh, Sturgis rally guests. That's how it's presented when we bought it. And that it was a rental when we bought it, so.
So you presumed when you were buying it that you'd be able to supplement the payments with rental?
Yeah, um, not that we really, we don't need to, um, but my wife currently, we have, plus we have four kids. My oldest kid is ten. So she stays home and watches the kids. Because daycare for four kids in the summertime is insane.
So there's somebody there?
Yeah, all the time.
Okay.
And we, uh, purposely, if we're going to go somewhere, we block it out because I want to be there when someone's there.
Sure.
Yep, because it is my home, so.
Okay, thank you, Cole.
Yep.
Mr. Chair. How long have you lived there, Cole?
Uh, we bought it in, uh, August of twenty eighteen, if I remember it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My question for you is, it says that, uh, the B and B guests are not allowed to have a fire, whether in a pit or otherwise, unless approved by the state. Do you have a fire pit or anything available like that on site or no?
There's nothing wood fire pit. Personally, I own a, it's called a fire dancer. It hooks up to a propane bottle and you can turn it on and off.
Okay.
And they're not allowed to use that.
Cool. Any further questions for Mr. Foster? Thank you, sir, for your comments. Do, do you want to come up to the podium, please, and?
Pat Briesmeister, twenty-four, twenty-one. I, I got the list from Cody. We sent it out to eight, including Lowell and his wife. Okay? I personally talked to six out of the eight, and six out of the eight stated no. Hard no. Okay? That's the first thing. The little thing that you saw there, and both Cole and Renee have backed up for me to get through with my quad that I plow. It's just general courtesy because you can't get two vehicles through there at all times. Okay? And Lowell stating he only sees somebody once a month is because he leaves between seven and eight every day and he comes home at dark. He doesn't see the traffic. I'm retired. I put my thirty-five years in. I see it all the time. And you are absolutely wrong, sir. There's more, they rent it more than you could imagine, both of you. So to tell me that it doesn't get used that much, it's not. I live it. I see it. I breathe it. So please, unless you know the circumstances, you are absolutely incorrect in your statements.
I think the burden's on you.
The burden is on me, and I'm explaining it to you. And how would you like, ma'am, to have somebody pull up your driveway?
Mr. Chairman.
At night.
Hey, Charlie.
Excuse me, Pat. Let me explain something to you. We're all volunteers.
I understand.
Okay. None of your conversations should be personal, and if you have anything that's very angry and hateful to say, that's the guy you say it to.
I'm not, I'm not hateful.
Let me finish. I have the floor right now.
Sorry.
And you will lose a lot of your contention if you don't change that. We do not expect to be educated or chastised for sitting here. So go through your points strongly. You're very passionate about them. I understand them. I'll allow your latitude, but don't point fingers at any of my consultants, please.
My apologies. Didn't mean to. I, I, I am passionate because, you know, I have to protect my house and my wife. And would you like it? Would anybody like it? Would any homeowner like it? If you continuously get people to pull up the asphalt portion of your driveway, we have no idea who these people are. We have no idea where they're from, what they're, what they're doing. And, and yes, it is a, a, you know, it's, it was intended, as you stated, Charlie. The intent of that road was to service the five homes that was there, no less, no more. And yes, times have changed. That, yep, we do have UPS and we do have, you know, Don, I, I get that. But not to the extent that we see it. Oh, yeah, that, that, um, as far as the break-in, the break-in happened twice in twenty seventeen by the prior people that did rent it for long-term for a year. Because I was involved in it. I had to witness, I had to tell the police they had pictures, uh, of it. And I had to sit with the police and explain that it was the two little boys from the, from that rental right there.
Can we, um, I just don't want a bunch of stuff coming from the, the audience, sir. If you're up here addressing, we can bring her up to, uh, answer questions.
But it, I, I mean, I, I want to try and present the facts, and I want you to understand that, that it's, yes, I'm passionate because we want our peace. But when, when you see parts of the road that, you know, are my meadow right there, you don't see the first three quarters of the road that are one lane. And, and, you know, just the fact of somebody coming at night that are looking for two-four-zero-two-eight. They can't see, they can't see a sign. There's no, the same way with the nine-eleven services. So that's my point, is that i- if, if people are trying to find two-four-zero-two-eight, the first thing they're going to do is pull up to two-one, whether I've got it illuminated or not. And, and I have no idea who these people are. They're risking our safety.
I just want to make one other clarification. We do have a light on our address, simply because we want to avoid that. Also, the idea that, um, the place was rented before, that was done illegally. We do have covenants for our neighborhood, and we'll bring that up with our neighbors later. But I do want to point out that it was rented illegally. It was just for one year. That doesn't set precedence for having an Airbnb for the rest of eternity. So I just wanted to make that clarification. It was, it was rented only for one year, and it wasn't done legally.
Any questions for Mr. Bryce Meister?
I don't have a question, but I, I just want to put this on the record. You know, I, you indicated that, um, you know, we don't, we're not in your shoes, so we don't, we're not in a position where we can, um, understand really what goes on, on, on a daily basis, you know, with you and, and your wife and so on. You know, likewise, I'd just like you to be, make sure that you don't generalize about us, and I'm speaking with me personally. You know, I live, um, not too far, I live in the Hill City area. Right north of where we live, about a mile, is the big KOA campground. Every summer, we get multiple vehicles, some of them mu- big RVs, some small, some pulling trailers, on and on, that come into our driveway thinking that, is this the campground? And it, it's really about attitude because I've, I mean, I got a little irritated because one of them fell off of our driveway and made some big ruts, and it was very muddy, and it was a big RV and they couldn't turn around, and we had to help them and so on, but I've met some remarkably wonderful people. I mean, I'm, we met a couple, and their grandkids from New Orleans. We met some people that were coming from Missouri, and they ended up staying extra days because, uh, so there's, we, we, we are a place of visitors in the summer. And I personally, you know, even though there's a bit of an aggravation, uh, at, at times, it's quite an opportunity for me personally to get acquainted with, with all these people and to help them figure out the Black Hills a little bit, and to be hospitable to our guests, and, and so I don't mind at all being a neighbor to the big campground. So I guess ju- my point is, is that, you know, please don't generalize about other homeowners that are in the Black Hills. I mean, I like my privacy. I like the fact that we've got some area around us without close neighbors, but I don't mind the visitors. So just, you know, please don't generalize about us either.
A- and I apologize if I did. Um, no intent. But understand, when, you might be fine, I'm personally not.
Right.
Because you don't know my background. You don't know how much I've traveled, how many, how many years of hotel stays I've stayed in. So, you know, it's, it's a preference, and my rights are the same as your rights.
Sure.
And if privacy is important to you, I'm going to respect it.
Understand.
Because I know how important it is to me. So, I, I mean, a- a- enough said. We've taken up enough time on the whole thing.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, I live close to Deerfield Lake.
Yep.
I live with twelve other property owners, no way in, no way out on one road. I'm the last guy. And I've taken care of the road for over forty years before I lived there and whatnot, so I understand the personalization that a property can get, especially being the last guy, but I know all the guys in between too. But what I've got to ask you here, is the road tighter during the winter than conditions than it is in the summer?
Well, absolutely. It's tighter because you can only plow so wide. Okay, and, and we do try and plow it as wide as possible. Um, but either way, summer winter, spring or fall.
When you say we do, that, that's each property owner, or how's that done, Pat?
As far as what?
Uh, the snow removal.
I generally do it. Cole comes every once in a while because he does get up, because he does have four children, so he's up at four-thirty, five o'clock.
And what sort of equipment do you have to do that?
I've got a, a Polaris Ranger with a plow on it.
So you never know whether three foot, snow is coming or two inches.
No, I'll call, um, Tim.
Okay, then you have somebody.
He's got it. He's got, I mean,
Okay.
I can handle everything that, I've lived there for five years, but if it's a three footer, um, and I'm not on top of it, doing it every couple hours, I'm going to have a problem. So he's, he's got-
Okay, and then, back to my question, then, in other words, you're restricted during the winter, how far you can, your equipment can push it back?
Yes.
And what does that leave for an opening by the time you push it back?
In most places, I'm going to say between fifteen, sixteen feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
And again, I apologize. I didn't mean to point or, or get on anybody's, I'm, I'm, I, I prefer privacy.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item?
Can I ask Cody, come back up?
Go ahead.
You know where I'm coming from, Cody. We kind of got started about this this morning. My biggest concern right now, and, and I took the time to check it out, I noticed two notes. One, what started me thinking. If you look on page seven of seven, it's under March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, it's number one. And it says Stone Ridge Road is a public road that is under jurisdiction of the Road District when the easement was signed over. And I had a big question about that. And I heard during testimony that it's a twenty-foot easement. Well, for starters, the county's twenty-five, isn't it? We use twenty-five in our zoning.
I think it's twenty-four.
Twenty, it's something like that. It's, it's not twenty. Then I flipped back over to page four out of seven. I'll try to keep talking to the mics that we don't lose place. And down in the bottom of note four, it says according to the Naughty Pine Road District, easement was signed over to the Road District and is maintained by funds from the Road District. The Road District doesn't anticipate this affecting access. So then I checked because there was no listing for a Road District under the name of the original access. And then I did find Naughty Pine, and it appears Naughty Pine, uh, went through the correct county process that's, uh, mandated by the commissioners to become a Road District and is now under the auspices of our auditor, just like every other Road District. My only question here is, I'm not sure that we've ever run into a Road District that is just an access-type property. I'm not sure it really is a public road in my mind. And the reason I bring that up, the Road District that I'm part of, in fact, I'm, I'm the chair of the trustees right now, we have one piece of property that's an access. And we can't even put gravel on it legally. It's not part of the Road District. Well, now we've got a whole Road District that's access. I don't know. It, it struck me as, and that's part of the problem here. In other words, I believe the people, the individual property owners, those that are represented here and those that aren't represented here, originally had some idea with this access that was signed over, and I'm not sure of the legality of signing that over to the Road District. I don't know. The whole thing, again, back to my, my, my idea, I think there's some generational understandings here, but one of them, this one confuses me. So I, if you feel comfortable with that, I guess I'm all right, but I'm not very comfortable with that. So if you feel comfortable with that, I guess I'm all right, but I'm not very comfortable with that.
Further questions for Cody? No further questions?
Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 21 dash 04 with 20 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, no one else in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no? We have four to one. One no. Motion carries. Item 17.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Malater, Planning Director. Item 17 is layout plan LPL 21 dash 10 to create lots one and two of the Mary Jane Load MS 1944 subdivision in accordance with section 400.1 of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. As the property sits today, it doesn't contain a single-family residence. Um, this plan was submitted, um, by all aspects engineering. Um, it does border the city of Keystone. There are some structures that are actually encroaching over the lot line between Hill City, or excuse me, Keystone and Pennington County. So this, um, layout plan is to correct those encroachments and these portions of the structures that are over the lot line. Uh, I'll just go over the basic criteria that we reviewed for this plan. Uh, is the property zoned appropriately? No. This will require a rezone if this property were to stay within Pennington County. If it is going to be annexed into the city of Keystone, it would have to meet their zoning requirements. Is a rezone required? Yes, it would be if this property is to stay within Pennington County. The comprehensive plan amendment is not required. Uh, is there a section line on the property that must be dedicated and improved? Yes. Are there encroachments into the section line right-of-way? Yes. Does the property require percolation test and profile hole information? Yes. Is there legal access to the property? Yes. Are the certifications on the layout plan in accordance with section 400.1? Uh, the applicant surveyor did not submit actually a plan, that he just submitted this, um, site drawing. Does the plan meet the requirements? No. Are eight-foot minor drainage and utility easements? No. Are building permits required for existing structures? There may be building permits required or temporary building permits required for the storage yard that's in that northwest corner of the property. Is a conditional use permit required for any uses? Yes. There is a storage yard on this property that looks like it was put in, um, after 1994. Are there easements and rights-of-way included? Yes. And is there flood plain on the property? No. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with this request with the exception of addressing the storage yard, the encroachments with the section line right-of-way, which will have to be done prior to, um, final plan approval. So staff is recommending approval of this layout plan with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Brittany, you threw in a, a real unknown to me and there, how do we look at, uh, portable storage containers if that was what you were referring to in your, your write-up here? You had, there was some storage containers on the side.
There are. You can see in that, uh, northwest corner of the property, that area. Um, there's a couple of ways that we would look at them through the CUP process. It would depend if they come and go, if they're staying there for a long period of time. If they're there for a long period of time, they would have to get building permits or temporary building permits. Um, I don't, we don't know at this time what they're, are stored for. Um, this is owned by the Holy Terror Mining Company. Um, so I'm under the assumption that has to do with some mining activity or storage of materials.
Do we have any direct reference to these new portable storage containers? We're really becoming a big deal. I've seen them on private, uh, public housing, you know, like out in Somerset. There's housing with, with, sitting alongside the house.
Um, so because our new section 200 addresses just used by rights, this would be a conditional use under any of these districts, so they would have to address that.
What I was fishing for.
The remainder portion of this lot will have to be rezoned and that'll have to be addressed as part of them.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. No one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Uh, staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plan LPL 21 dash 10 with 12 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 18.
Item 18 is preliminary plat PPL 21 dash 06 to create lot two of block two and lot one and two of block three and lot seven through lot 10 of block three of Cedar Gulch number two subdivision. Um, staff is recommending to continue this, uh, plant request to the April 12th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant subdivision regulation variance to be heard by the Board of Adjustment.
I would move that we accept staff's recommendation as I was the last time we did this, to follow suit with where we're at.
Correct. The applicant had requested to move it to no later than the April 6th, 2021 Board of Adjustment meeting.
Correct. So we're using April 12th instead, is what you're saying?
Correct, because the hearing in front of the Board of Adjustment will be the 6th.
But I would move that we do this, uh, again, uh, further down the road so that we have some direction before we're reviewing this matter.
Motion to continue. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second for continuing, um, preliminary plat 21 dash 06 to the April 12th, 2021, um, Planning Commission meeting. Further discussion? Seeing none. Um, no one in the audience wishes to speak either, noting that for, uh, the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Lives to item 19.
Um, item 19 is ordinance amendment OA 21 dash 01 to add section 323 bed and breakfast to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, this is a new section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance pertaining to bed and breakfast establishments. Um, as you all know, um, we have, um, sections of our ordinance pertaining to guest houses and vacation home rentals. And as a board, you guys have seen that we have differences between bed and breakfast establishments and vacation home rentals. Uh, we see more and more bed and breakfasts, um, mainly because, uh, under the state definition, they do allow them on contiguous properties. Um, so this is, uh, an attempt to address some of those concerns. Uh, so there are some objective criteria that this commission can look at when reviewing those requests. So if there's specific requirements, I know that there is one definition, um, that the state's attorney's office and our office had worked on, on, under number three. Um, we do have a proposed definition there for consideration by this commission. Uh, that definition would be a container that is used either to store or hold food for human consumption in a safe manner.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay. Boy, I, I feel bad. I have too many things to bother me about this. On your page three of four, your item aye, it says contiguous. And, and I believe that you're referring to what, the way the state also looks at it, correct?
Correct.
My problem with that is I've put number one, location with reference to a main building or all the same building. And the reason I do that is we actually have one, I drive by it every day, operating, that's over a quarter of a mile in another house away from the bed and breakfast. Contiguous? Well, not in my mind because the person who bought the house with that in mind, they were just going to transfer, they were already in the bed and breakfast business. My problem with that is the same thing could happen that we're having going on here today with the one item. And that being that people buy a house with no intention to do anything but to make it a bed and breakfast in a neighborhood that really doesn't want it. So, uh, can we do something to define contiguous is my question? Without, uh, we can't step on the state's toes. I know that.
Correct. For one reference, in our guest house ordinance, we do actually have a distance requirement. It says it has to be closer to the main home than it is to any surrounding properties. Uh, so that does address some of the concerns with what you're speaking about.
Yeah. Yeah, this one should have never got approved. It was years ago, but somebody snuck it through. They had some friends somewhere quickly and the paperwork went through. But that's why they bought the home in the first place.
Sure. So if that is something we, this commission would entertain as far as adding that, uh, that this, I'm sorry.
No, excuse me. Uh, Colin McNeese, State's Attorney's Office, Commissioner Johnson, I think the problem with doing that would be, we would be stepping on the state's toes. Because contiguous is in the statute. It says either in the same building or contiguous.
Right.
So for the definition of contiguous, I'd have to look. I think the statutes just got changed within the last 10 years. So whatever with the Merriam-Webster or your favorite dictionary, look up contiguous. So as far as that parcel that you were talking about, as long as it's, you know, somehow touching the parcel, it would probably be fine. And I understand that that's probably problematic, but that's something that we'd have to talk to our state legislators.
In this case, the Forest Service property intersection comes between before you even get to the other. That's how far down the road it is. So contiguous is, was a little iffy, I think, when they did it. But no, I understand and I believe that's our biggest problem is if the state says contiguous, we, you as a director are really under the gun with your clients to come in and request.
Correct. And most of them that we have seen of late are on the same lot or they are on contiguous properties, meaning that there are several lots that are almost like a developmental lot situation. I know we have a P U D that's, uh, that has one, uh, and it's just on a contiguous property. They live on the property next to it. They have several other uses. The bed and breakfast is on a property separate from that, but it's part of the P U D.
Thank you. I just didn't want to leave your, my discussion out of this discussion.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Brittany, I just have two things.
Sure.
Uh, one is, um, under design and layout where it says building material, a bed and breakfast must be stick-built. Now, I'm assuming that's to try to avoid bed and breakfast being in like mobile homes. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
So, you know, nowadays, I know, I hear about these, I think they're called modular or manufactured or something, but they have the appearance of stick-built and they're really, they are, but you know, they're just, they're just, they're kind of brought in and, and, you know, put together. Is that a stick-built house?
Some of them are and some of them are not. It depends. Uh, I know the governor's homes are stick-built. They consider those stick-built. Uh, so it would depend on, um, that.
Okay, but so you, those types that are these modular kinds that are brought in, they, they, if they're done with certain specifications, are stick-built?
Correct. If they meet the definition, there's modular and mobile home definitions, which this board will get to see at the next Planning Commission meeting because we're going to address single-wide mobile homes and mobile homes, so those definitions will come up.
Okay. Then the, the other thing is under occupancy, the maximum number of guests is two per guest room. How does that, uh, work if they, if it's a family and they've got an infant, for example, or a child under the age of two? Can the, can the little child stay with the parents in the room?
That is actually straight out of statute. So the statutory requirements are two per guest room.
So how do you handle it? Or, I mean, or you don't, you don't handle it really. It's, it's up to the.
We're not there, Kathy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson, that one's a, a tough one, uh, because I'm sure that happens all the time where a young family has their young son or daughter there with them. Because it's addressed by state statute though, I don't necessarily think that we can come in and address it because it's, we go by the plain and ordinary meaning. So contiguous is a good example. That one's easy to look up. But if you look up, uh, family-style meal, that one's more of a term of art. And then with the occupancy, the legislature has really just occupied the field there because it's really no room for interpretation of what occupancy means.
I see.
But it is kind of a conundrum and I, I sympathize with that. That's one of the things that came up when we were drafting this.
Right, I see. All right, very good.
I, I think that, I don't know, I, I guess I would view that a little bit differently. Um, it says the maximum number of guests is two per guest room, but it doesn't say that only two people can stay in a guest room. So if you had a bed and breakfast and you had two bedrooms, your maximum occupancy would be four. I don't know. See where I'm saying, see where I'm going. But I, I, your question's valid.
I see. Yeah. Put the single person in the one room and have the three family.
Problem solved.
Problem solved. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, here's my problem. It says a cooked family-style meal. I don't cook. So does that mean I can't serve yogurt, fruit, muffins? It specifies it has to be cooked. Just a point.
And which section is that?
Oh, that's under preamble.
One of four, it's item two.
Number two, under definitions, breakfast, a cooked family-style meal.
I apologize, Commissioner Rundy, that was my error. Uh, it should comport with, uh, number four, family-style meal because the family-style meal is defined by statute, so that one would control. So I think if we excise cooked, I think that would take care of the issue. And I appreciate you looking that over and catching my error.
I see. Thank you.
Colin, you just cross out cooked and you're suggesting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't, uh, I didn't have specific, uh, questions, uh, about the language in this, but my general question is, is what, what is the biggest problem that this amendment's going to solve?
The differentiation. Right now, when someone comes in to request, uh, a bed and breakfast or a vacation home, right now, vacation home has very specific criteria. And we have people that live in homes, but they have a secondary structure on their building or on their property. And right now, we are running them as bed and breakfasts because they meet that definition. The previous request is the, um, perfect example of that. Um, and Marilyn Bolt, she has the same situation with that because of the contiguous property, because it meets those requirements. Um, you know, so we're, we're loosely, um, comparing them to what we require for vacation home rentals and guest house. Um, this was kind of a, a meld of those, of those two requirements.
So this seeks to define bed and breakfast in Pennington County?
Correct, and to give this commission some objective criteria when actually reviewing those requests.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, like.
I, I like the separating them out because I, personally, I know one person that I work with that he rents out rooms in his house while he lives there and does exactly what you're saying. And to differentiate from vacation to this is, I think, is, is good in clarifying what a person's doing who's actually there. So I, I know things are different. We have, there's no set standard for everything. You know, he, he does it for supplement money to, to help him buy his house, which is generational is what's happening nowadays. Parents are living with their kids and so forth, and this is another way to purchase a house. So I think we do need to kind of separate them. So I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, just one, just a clerical thing. I think you're, look under, uh, page four of four on the one we're reviewing. And I bring in this up and it's, I'm pretty sure number one belongs in the second one. And then number one in the second one belongs in the first one. That's page three of three. See, you're talking about an accessory mine does, the dwelling to ensure compliance, accessory dwelling. That's the second one. And then if you read number one, power to review belongs in the, this one because it's the conditional use permit one.
Oh, yeah, there's flip-flops.
I think they're just, they got switched in typing.
Yeah.
Okay. That, I, I'll be quiet. I don't think I have a thing to say the rest of me.
So say it.
Promises, promises.
I'll say it on my hands.
So where, where will item number one under review go?
One needs to go, each one, they just need to flip-flop, the ordinance.
Yep.
Through the right wording, everything's correct. They just, the, the number one on the second one is the number one for the first. Number one on the second, first one is for the second.
All right, so the address.
I'm glad I don't have to do that. I couldn't cut and paste anything.
Yeah. Is that correct?
Yeah. I just, it just a, a note. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Johnson, I appreciate it. Commissioner Johnson, I appreciate it. There's a lot of these flowing around there, so sometimes you use different sections and sometimes you forget to update them. So I appreciate all of the hard work that the commissioner does to review the work to ensure that the best possible product get out there. And it's this kind of back and forth that I think does that, so thank you.
Further questions on the ordinance amendment? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. Um, I noted the following changes that in, uh, section A, two, under breakfast, um, the word cooked would be removed. A three, um, you guys inserted the definition for the common food service containers. And then in item C, uh, the accessory dwelling was replaced with bed and breakfast. These are the changes, correct?
No, not really. The wording's a little different in this, in the conditional use permit one. I don't think you can just put bed and breakfast in accessory dwelling. I think you have to, plant, as the authority, review a conditional use permit for the accessory. Oh, I guess they both have conditional. I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't read it that way. Didn't have it underlined.
You were gonna be quiet.
I was gonna be quiet. Should have. Thank you.
Further changes? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval with the changes made.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty.
Item twenty is ordinance amendment oh eight twenty-one dash zero-two to add section three twenty-four accessory dwellings to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This is a new section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This is just a way to, again, it will be a conditional use permit. It does provide some objective criteria in looking at accessory dwelling units. I, I know that there has been quite a bit of discussion about these types of units in the county, the need for some affordable housing. These are not to be used. I think there's some prohibitions with them being used for home occupations and vacation home rentals. They're meant for more long-term rentals, granny flats, mother-in-law suites, those kind of coin terms. There is some limitation on size and what they look like. The city of Rapid City does have a similar ordinance. We did look at the city of Rapid Cities. The biggest difference with theirs is they do have public water and sewer. So for this, um, it wouldn't be as simple as just issuing a permit that conditional use is going to, um, probably require some upgrades to water and sewer facilities for these. But I'll entertain any questions or concerns.
Questions for staff on this one?
I just, I just have one. You know, I just, I just wonder if the, these design, uh, criteria really need to be so specific. You know, there's two things. One, under three, the design requirements, uh, Roman numeral five is incorporate the same materials, colors, predominant roof form and pitch of the primary home. And then, then there's B, and it lists quite a few different things. I mean, I understand that there should be a probably size, a maximum size, and the fact that it's smaller than the main home is, makes perfect sense. But is it really, is it really necessary to be so specific about all these design features?
When we did these, like I said, these are pretty similar to what the city requires in their ADU, um, ordinance. We anticipate them being a lot of, uh, over-the-garage type of units, similar to the previous request that you had seen. It's more of a, I guess, opinion on ISO, I guess, than others. If it's something that this commission doesn't feel is necessary or is too restrictive. And one of the things that to kind of keep in mind, too, that Commissioner Johnson had brought up, is, you know, you're seeing these, um, storage units and things like that being used as living quarters. You know, that would be something, if you didn't have specific design criteria, you could see something like that being used as a ADU.
But is that so terrible? I mean, if they, assuming they have the proper utilities and so on and so on, I mean, is it just, I mean, we are in the county where, um, I, I don't know, I just, I, I guess I just, personally, I'd, I would, I'd be perfectly, I'd be, I would support having a little less restrictions on the design. That's just me personally.
Mr. Chairman. I will say, I, I just got Hulu a couple of weeks ago and watched a show on storage shed homes being built. So I mean, it's not like it's uncommon.
Right.
And they didn't look like storage units after they were done, but I, I'm just saying. But some of the designs I debate with, I know some people who, who have built a garage with an apartment up on top on, under property because it wasn't feasible to build at the same time, and they do, they're pretty nice units. I, I would, I kind of like this to have a little say in it, but. But I, I didn't want to disregard your, your comments, Kathy, because I've seen the storage unit homes and, and they've been pretty nice from what I've seen, but not in our area.
I just, I guess I just view it as being, um, you know, and I think back on the number of times we've, you know, we sat here and have had some, you know, we're got, kind of put in a tough spot because the ordinance is very restrictive, and what the applicant is asking for is just slightly outside of that. And so it, it just creates kind of some tough spots. And so it just seems to me that, um, we need to be kind of careful about what specific things to put in these because it's just going to create some headaches down the road. But I understand the other point, too, that if you don't give some guidance, then it's, it makes that, you know, a little, creates more difficulty. So I don't know, just.
It seems to me that the design requirements are pretty minimal. You know, incorporate the same materials. I mean, wood siding, you know, engineered siding, brick, whatever happens to be the predominant colors. You know, it isn't hard to, to duplicate the color from the existing, uh, the, the predominant roof form and pitch is not usually hard unless it's a fancy, you know, rather exotic pitch of some kind, but that's not going to be the case in most instances. I, I think it's pretty minimal. And I think it protects the poorer neighborhoods of this community and, and of the county. If you're in an expensive subdivision out in the county somewhere and somebody does this, they'll probably do it upright because they have the resources. But a lot of times, I think what happens is if somebody has, somebody puts in one of these things next door to them, and they're trying to maintain their house and, you know, have a decent curb appeal, and a guy puts together something that, and, and to be honest with you, and I would be the first to admit this, you could comply with these precisely and probably have pretty bizarre, you know, structure. But at least we're, we're communicating something here, is that you're, you're, you're trying to maintain some standard for your neighbors. It's not, it's not really. And that's my feeling. And I, I understand where Kathy's coming from. My, uh, if you live out in the, you know, a five-way road lock and you can't see the guy down the road, then of course, it's not an issue. But a lot of places where there's a lot tighter, it seems to me it's a, a modest demand to make.
Commissioner Johnson, were you talking about three A five, incorporate the same materials, colors, and predominant roof?
Well, that was one thing that caught my attention, is that, uh, is this really, um, necessary? And then, you know, under the, the other design maximums, I mean, why do we care whether the attached deck is greater than forty feet? I mean, I, I guess I just don't understand why that would be a problem if it's forty-five or fifty. And, and having a balcony or second-story deck, why would we care? Two stories, I, I can see that. We don't want any elevators. Two bedrooms makes some sense to me. Five hundred square feet is fine. But I just think, I look at these and I think, why do we, why would we care if they have a second-story deck?
So based on that, my understanding is that you think that we could eliminate three A five and then three B one and two?
Well, yeah, those are the ones that, and I'm not going to fall on my sword about this, don't get me wrong, but, uh, because if, maybe it's a consensus, we need a little bit more, um, you know, definition. Well, that's, that's fine. But those are the ones that just, when I read this, I'm thinking, why would we care if there's a second-story deck? What harm would it do?
Well, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because that's part of the vetting process. If a majority believes that, you know, why should we have that? I mean, I understand what Commissioner Coleman's talking about, too, and I understand what you're talking about, too, and.
Well, it is a five hundred square foot structure. It's not very big.
Nope.
You know, I mean, it's very small. There might be a propensity to go up another story, saying, hey, you, maybe we, you know.
No, I think two stories is fine, you know, a max. I mean, that, that makes some kind of sense, but, uh, because I say, we don't want to.
I own a cabin, not, not in Pennington County, but it's only eight hundred square feet and the deck is nine hundred and fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
So there you go.
We got a lot of views.
But I, I totally understand, um, about three A five and three B one and two. I mean, that's really the commission's prerogative, and then staff. I mean, I, I totally understand what both of you guys are talking about, and I apologize for saying you guys, and we've talked about that, I apologize.
I'm in favor of that. Um, Kathy, I would, I would support removing three A five and three B one and two. Let, let the other ones govern the, the design requirements. It's more based on, uh, in my understanding, the, the whole idea behind this ordinance amendment is to put some sort of, uh, definition to what an accessory dwelling is. And that probably has more to do with the size of the building, um, and, and making sure that the utilities are coming from the primary residence and that it doesn't have separate utilities and all of the things that, that comes forth based on, on those ideas. So I would be in support of your recommended changes.
Mr. Chair, I promise not to talk, but I've got to tell you, I'm involved in actually looking at another one that you'd want to leave those in there. They got a garage permit from the building, uh, county planning, and then they added, uh, an area off the garage, uh, covered area with a roof. And the whole idea, and then you put a fireplace in the, on a wall in the garage, and the whole idea is that all the people that they know that come in RVs and whatnot congregated in there, they drink beer and they make noise for the neighbors. So I think it is important to have some of those things in there. And so do the neighbors that called me. They have seven RV sites that are buried out and around, which I'm going to go look at this summer to see if that's true. And that's the whole idea of the garage permit, an accessory building on somebody's property. So I would worry about a deck bigger than forty square feet because that's the exact problem right there.
Any, any homeowner could do what you're doing on their regular house. It wouldn't, I mean, what they chose to do wouldn't require an accessory structure here.
But that's the route they took.
Yeah, I know that, but it, it, through a garage, that's different than this, too, because it's, this is, you know, for living quarters. So I just think, I mean, I understand that that's a nuisance, and it could be pursued perhaps under the nuisance ordinance. But I just think that, using that example to try to affect this is, is, is truly, you know, a tail wagging the dog. So I respectfully disagree that that's.
Okay.
Further questions on the ordinance amendment? How do you guys want to handle items three, uh, five, three A five and three B one and two? Opinions on those? I'd like to gain a consensus, I guess, or a majority of the board to strike those.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay leaving them or okay getting rid of them?
Getting rid of them.
Can I ask one question, Brittany, before? Uh, a deck is covered, a patio is not, right? Under the way we have it written?
Correct, a deck, well, even the covered patio would require a building permit.
Right. A covered patio, yeah. Because the way I read it now, this deck would have, would have a roof over it, right?
No, this would just be an open deck, a patio, like if they come in and put in a cover or overhang, that would require the, if it's separate from the normal structure, the soffits.
Mr. Chair, to help, if the, the consensus is I'd take them out, and if I've got a problem with that, I'll vote against it.
Got it. Okay. So, um, ordinance amendment twenty-one dash zero-two. I guess I'm looking for a motion for approval, uh, as written with the removal of items three A five and three B one and two.
Three B one and leave in three B two?
I think, I would take that out, too.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move approval of this ordinance with those changes. Deletion of three A five, deletion of three B one and two.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No, and just the changes. That's, other than that, I want to vote for the amendment or the ordinance.
So we got one, two, three, four, ayes, two noes. Is that correct? Thank you. Item twenty-one, the county board report.
Uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the March eighth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting and subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one oh three for Granby Land LLC. Dan Lewis is the owner, Gordon Howie is the agent to waive the requirement to not construct a second means of ingress egress, to not submit engineered road plans, and to not construct to ordinance fourteen standards and to waive the requirement that written authorization is obtained from the local water supplier, stating that there is adequate water supply to serve the proposed subdivision and planning unit development district was continued to no later than April sixth, twenty twenty-one Board of Adjustment meeting, per the applicant's request.
Any questions? Seeing none, item twenty-two, items from the public. Yes, sir.
Looking pretty good.
Ron, Ross, the reason I'm here is because I, when I ran for county commission, I told my constituents that I would, that I would work backwards for them. So I was here today for item sixteen, and I didn't speak on it because it's not my position. You guys did what you had to do, and I think you did a good job. I did inform Commissioner Drews yesterday that I'd be here today, and I did call Lloyd last night. But that's the reason I'm here. On the way here, I'm going, I got one o'clock appointment to look at a property. I'm going, what am I going to do all day? So anyhow, you've taken care of that. And I probably got a parking ticket on top of it.
There you did.
So anyhow, I don't envy your job. Uh, you're right, you don't make very much money, and anyhow, I thought, uh, it was a good day to learn, and, uh, might have to come to more of these. So just wanted to let you know why I'm sitting out there with my hand on my head.
Appreciate your call last night, and I told you it was going to be a long meeting.
You're right. You guys have a good day.
You as well, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Items from the staff.
Actually, the item that's under membership should be from items under, uh, staff. Um, we did hire two employees. Uh, both of them were here earlier today, so some of you did have the opportunity to meet them. Um, we have a new Assistant Environment Planner, Madison Ransom. Um, she will be at the next planning commission meeting. And we did hire a building inspector, Mindy Martinez. So we will be working towards some contractors licensing and building codes and those types of ordinances that this commission will see shortly.
Did we lose some staff?
We did lose one. Um, Stephanie had left the office, uh, back in December. Uh, the building inspector is a new position.
Oh, okay. No, I was talking about in the past month.
What specifically would the building inspector be inspecting? All aspects, or is there a specific goal of the position?
The specific goal, uh, to start is just some basics going out, seeing that the property is cited, or the structures are cited. If there's any concerns about citing, maybe requiring a site survey, making sure that they're building what they say they're building. Um, and that's mostly the biggest thing to start out, and then the contractor's licensing. And then slowly moving towards, you know, other types of requirements, verifying with the state that they are pulling their plumbing and electrical permits.
Okay, thank you. Items from the membership. Hearing none. Hearing none. Uh, item twenty-five, adjournment. Sir, motion?
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.